The purpose of the meeting is really, it's really your meeting in the sense that the list of issues that you see before you are issues, obviously there's a couple of obvious ones that we've been talking about for a while, but there's others that people, I think we've all kind of had sidebar conversations, whether it be me or Jen or whoever, and we just kind of wanted a forum to talk them through. So, we brought this idea to the team and they embraced it wholeheartedly. Didn't you?
Absolutely.
And, but it actually just, it did coincide very well with their strategic planning. So, the goal is to raise some of these issues and give them really some direction as they really start diving into the, to the planet itself. Will we quote-unquote resolve these issues tonight? No, that's not really, if I stroke a miracle, we can, that's fantastic, but that's not necessarily the goal. Again, the goal is just to have a conversation about these. I want to hear, they want to hear what's on our minds about, about these issues before us and then we'll, you know, we'll take it from there. Again, this is the first time we've tried this. If it works, great, we'll do it again. If not, no harm, no foul, that's fine. But again, the way, then structurally, the way it'll work is I'll sort of tee up the issue, kind of again, why it's on the agenda, and then I'll turn to Matt T. and see if there's anything for them to add, and then it's kind of our open forum. Again, these are your issues that you brought before me, so this is your meeting, so I highly encourage you to, this is the time, this is your opportunity to voice your opinion. If you do not voice your opinion, I'm taking that as support and I listen. So, this is the time. So, would that, you want to add?
I would just add, in kind of our talking and planning and thinking through this, as opposed to kind of our regular Board of Education meeting where we would present, right? We would kind of present a topic or the state of the state, we've provided some background information, not on all of the topics listed, but on some of them, we did that ahead of the meeting, and we see our role, we can do whatever the Board needs us to do, but not to sit here and push the information to you, but to be able to respond to maybe questions you have. We've put stickies out, we've got a parking lot, we can adjust to whatever we need to do based on how the conversation flows, but we see this as like, we're here as a supporting role and this is more of your conversation.
Absolutely. Let me say it a different way. The object tonight is for us to drive the conversation.
Yep.
As opposed to not.
Right.
And again, as Matt just said, we have a parking lot, again, I'm going to be, since we have a lot of issues, I'm going to be a little, little stripped on the time, I'm going to cut people off if we have to move on, and that's, okay, don't take that personally, that's just a, hey, let's move on and we'll come back to that conversation, right? And that's, that's where we'll utilize the parking lot, about kind of where we're at, what we need to do next, and as Matt said, the sticky notes, a little ingenious idea that they had. If you have, if you have questions on one of the topics and maybe we just don't get to it, or maybe you just think about it afterwards, write it down, right? Write it down and put it up on the parking lot and we'll get to it, I promise you. Okay? Any questions about what we're doing, the goal? All right? Right on time. Okay, so first up is the obvious one, right? Special Ed, we spent a lot of time on the budget, right? We all know about the overages, we all know what's driving it. As Matt, Matt put in a really good presentation, included a good presentation about how they're thinking about it, right? There's a couple of buckets, right? The outplacement, the transportation, you know, those are obviously the two main drivers, so that's, so we're, this is an opportunity to kind of look again at where we're at, what are the suggestions of resolving it, because this is a constant theme, right? We hear from the Board of Finance, we have for a few years. So, again, that's why it's on the agenda, we've got plenty of time to kind of really dive into this. Let me stop there. What do you want to add?
I would just, you know, from our perspective, I think it's important, obviously the budget process, we talked a lot about kind of three main areas of kind of shortfalls in the education programming related to special ed. A conversation we thought about and talked about before is as a way to provide solid programming and offset what has become like exponentially increased costs in tuition to private school programs would be to potentially look at a comprehensive program of our own in district. That is what is teed up in the PowerPoint stack, it's kind of conceptual of what we would think about in terms of different phases to do that. In order to do that, we have the challenge in our district of lack of space. So, some of the direction that we might look for tonight if we get there, if we don't, that's fine, is this potentially a concept you would like our administration to take the next step on? By that, I mean is talk to other boards in town about potential real estate acquisition, which would lead down the road to development of the program. So, it's kind of getting a sense of where people are on pushing the okay light on that, and then we could come back to you with a detail, hey, this is the process, this is what the steps would take to kind of, kind of start to make that happen.
And Matt, sorry about this, right? Glastonbury does this, East Hartford does this, this is a number of schools.
Yeah, we have that, right?
Yeah. Katie's been recently taking kind of field trips out, site, site trips, she's been to Glastonbury in their Lynx program, and we've had experience, successful experiences sending students there. Ellington actually has a pretty comprehensive in district program that Katie went to last week, where a little more similar, they didn't have the space within their building, they end up leasing some kind of storefront to develop their program, but we've had some good looks at this, and this is not too unlike conceptually what we do and already have significant experience with Farmington Valley Transition Academy for our older students. You know, the only, only difference is these would be students that would be K-12 students, those are students, you know, 12 to 22.
It's certainly a different kind of need.
Different population.
Right? These are for students certainly with a more behavioral profile, where our Transition Academy might be a compilation of different needs, but students who need to kind of continue some of that functional academic or that transition to a collegiate setting up to the age of 22.
Just to, from a, from a budget, that's, that's from a programmatic perspective, just from a strict budgetary perspective, right? There does seem to be a little appetite for this out there from some of the other boards, right? Because if we're able to do this in town, right, you can recoup some of that money from, that we're doing by sending some of these kids out of district, right? So, as a colleague of most of ours on another board, I'd like to say it's a little upfront spend, but to save, right? It's a spend to save on this one. Spend a little bit upfront on the acquisition of the building, because that's probably where we would have to go, right? But you're going to recoup that fairly quickly, not overnight, right? But fairly quickly by bringing some of these kids back in town and by quickly charging tuition from, you know, other kids from out of the district. So, let me, let me stop there, that was, that was a mouthful. Please, go.
So, you mentioned Glastonbury with their program. Do they still have to send, with that program, do they still send children, students elsewhere?
Good question. I had a, probably about a 30-minute or so conversation with the superintendent of schools over there. So, overall, and don't hold me to the exact numbers, they have about 50, I think, students, 50 to 55 students in their K to 12 program that's housed at Eathbury School. They actually closed the school years ago, reopened it for the purposes of this program. They also take tuition students from other districts, I don't know how many, Brian, but it significantly offsets and the operation comes close to floating itself. They do still, in addition to that, have students in other programs. Sometimes there's just trying to meet the needs and the needs are so varied, right? You have to kind of build a program with a focus to gain a synergy, I think.
Yes.
And then there will still be students outside of that. But I thought Katie, kind of in page three of her stack, had some interesting data that it's trying to target a certain population, and it's the population Sue described, and we have eight to nine students right now at an outside program with the same profile. So, it would be like kind of focusing on that type of program to over time bring those students back.
And are those types of students, sorry, are those types of students that we identified, those eight to nine, do we see those regularly? I mean, or is it like once those, I mean, do they come through on a great consistent basis? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure of your actual question.
My question, I guess, the investment, right, in it, would, would it future-proof?
You mean, we'll see the profile again?
Would, is it future-proofed?
Yes, yes. This helps, we've always certainly had students that benefit from these types of behavioral services, we're just seeing more now, a different volume and intensity. So, I do believe that this would be investment, not only for current, but for future. And I absolutely know Katie's kind of analysis with other districts, there would be, we'd want to grow strong, but then as Matt shared, invite tuition paying students, and I certainly know that we could draw some other districts.
Sharon, you have ground.
So, I was going to ask a little bit about page three myself, especially when it got down to, like you said, it's nine students that are currently in same, in some local, I'm thinking therapeutic day school, and then three high school students across Greater Hartford, I didn't know what that really meant.
Not in the same program, but different programs in the generalized local area.
Okay.
Meaning that if we can provide those services, they're pretty local, it'd probably be better to be situated in town.
Okay, so they're going to, and then, and then four students are at diagnostic centers, those are the ones that we talked about?
That's, that's right down the, road outside Aladdin Road Lane. That's a collaborative with Crec.
Okay.
So, four of our students are there.
Okay.
And we're kind of a partner in a collaborative program that allows us to keep our tuitions down, it's a little bit of a unique model, it's not our own per se, but we're kind of a partner in it with four or five other, oh, more than that.
More than that, like eight or nine districts at this point.
Districts that sense.
That location, okay.
So, would the goal be to bring those four from the diagnostics center in as well?
Over time. So, really, if you step back from this and think about kind of making it happen, like we fought, we, we applied for a grant, right? So, if we were fortunate enough to get a grant of that magnitude, we could have a different conversation. But not knowing where that is, I think you would have to look at this in phases because of the staffing buildup to meet the program needs. So, I think phase one would be to move the behavioral program, which is an alternate program at Simsbury High School, to the new facility first. We already have staffing for that, so we could, in kind of a relatively quick way, get that program up and running, get staffing situated, start to build the concept more, and when we get to the budget season next year, start to say, who can we bring back and what staff will we need? Because we wouldn't have the ability, timeline-wise, getting into year one, dollars for building, dollars for staff to go full scale right away. So, we would see phase two, exactly your question, Jessica, bringing those students back that we could. Now, these are all PPT decisions, right? These are collaborative conversations with parents. And then phase three would be, you market this successful program to other districts to gain tuition. So, by, you know, two, three years in, you have a situation that could be sustaining itself pretty well, and you've lowered your, if you just use this number of students, you've lowered your, I mean, if, if all being equal, right, understanding that, you've brought back a million dollars with the tuition.
And then for the students far outside of our local area that are out of district, do we have a following of those students and is the plan to then bring them back as well? They similarly situated in terms of behavioral issues and?
Right, so I think that that's the data on page three, that there are approximately nine students right now that we would look to as?
So, those are locally, I mean, are there students outside of their local area?
Our students?
Our students.
There are some, but wouldn't fit potentially this profile right away to be consistent. Because part of it is creating the mission of the program, the match for the student needs, and having enough similar to pull and draw. But the answer to your question is yes, we have other students with varied needs in other programs that aren't as local.
Okay, that wouldn't fit this.
That wouldn't fit this.
At least not today, right? I mean, the global goal, I think is where you're going, right? Is hopefully we could bring, over time, maybe come back as well, right?
Oh, I'm not saying the number would stagnate at this, but it wouldn't be a program that would meet every student's complex need and be varied to that ability. You know, there are some students that require some medical assistance in other, other areas of, you know, significant resource.
So, I, I'm going to ask then, because I think whether we get there or not, one of the things you're looking for from us is to either give a yea or nay or about proceeding to look for space. So, going to year one, because that's what the space would really be for, can you just, I mean, I know it's here, but could you just give us, what would it look like?
Yeah, I mean, I won't talk about the particular space I have, I have in mind, because those actually conversations would be executive level conversations with the Board of Selectment. But if we secured the space, and if say you had a timeline of trying to do that this summer, you negotiate that this summer, maybe you secure it early fall, we think we'd have the ability by even mid-year or a few months in to transition our Simsbury High School program, that's housed in the modulators, to this setting, have a much more effective setting, I think we'd be much more successful with the kids in a setting that's separate from the high school. We have some challenges with that high school setting, there's no bathrooms out there, there's just some unique challenges to where that program is housed. You could have anywhere from, I don't know the exact numbers, eight to?
I would say about eight to 10.
Eight to 10 students there, and you would, that would be kind of phase one. Success in phase one would be you keep those students throughout the whole year. We've had some attrition in that program where students have started in that program in pathways and they end up being, being outplaced for a variety of reasons. So, that would, that's what I would see year one, because it wouldn't require an extra influx of personnel dollars. That would be our challenge, we're not flexible to be able to find, hey, we want to make this happen quicker, you know, if you said to administration, can we kind of have conversations with these families to bring these students back to this program? It requires a different level of staffing, teachers and everything else to do it right. So, we would see that conversation as a budget conversation next year.
So, even, I mean, there's, apparently there's space that you all have been eyeing, right? And so, again, going back to the nod, there's a lot of assumptions even around the space, us getting it, funding it, the green, and the space is moving ready, because that's the other thing.
It's close. We think it's pretty close.
Okay.
You know, I had, I had a conversation with an employee on the town side about getting, getting back in after this meeting today, depending on the direction, and getting his expertise on what we need to do. We would definitely have to get kind of like a smaller scale transition elevator from basement to top, which would have a pretty significant expense. But other than that, it's pretty wide open in terms of four or five, which would be seen as pretty ready to go classrooms. I mean, paint and stuff like that and some flooring, but we don't foresee any major construction needed to get it up and going.
Okay.
But I'd want some other eyes on that, because being a builder is not my, Jennifer.
Would we be able to then get rid of the modules at Simsbury and then save us the money?
Yeah, I think, that's a great question, Jennifer. I haven't really thought that through to that extent, but I will share this, it's going to have to be dealt with in the pretty near future. We also have some other offices out there and have like tech equipment out there, they're in really bad shape, and the cost just to replace those would be a million dollars, which is what we saw at Terryville. So, when I actually went to the Board of Selectment for an executive session on this topic a year ago, just to kind of start to talk about the concept, I did parlay it against the cost of replacing those modulators, because I do think that's a factor in how we analyze overall where we're housing things and what our space constraints are.
How old are those modulators?
Two thousand and two, something.
Oh.
And then the next summer, two thousand and two and two thousand and three.
Yeah, because I was thinking maybe we could reuse them, but?
And you've actually put, not too recently?
Yes.
But you've put capital dollars into kind of extending the life on those, so those are pretty close to it.
They were used, it was swing space to allow the construction of the high school to go on.
Okay.
So, you moved seven classrooms out there at a time while they got renovated in the high school, and then it just kept moving for like three years.
And Sue, one more question. Of these, like nine, 12, 16 kids, or anybody in, that fits this type of student, do any of them ever come back into the program regularly or general?
Do you mean at this first phase, the alternative program, or do you just mean a general out of district?
She's talking about the kids on page three.
Sometimes, sometimes, it's, it's more of an exception and not the norm, because their, their needs are pretty significant, and we just don't have all of the structure of what they need in order to educate them and as close to their school as could be. So, it does happen on occasion.
Liz Johnson, is that, are you guys okay with where we're heading on this? Any questions? Sorry, I'm not going to chat.
No, I think my only brief comment on it is, it fails to me, correct me if I'm wrong in the comparison, but, you know, these are all the details and we're digging in, but at the end of the day, fails to me like this, this cost is rising, it's almost like you're renting, and rent keeps going up, and rent keeps going up. Some point you've got to buy something, and it's going to be expensive, and there's going to be a lot that goes with it, but you have a choice to make. You either keep renting and it's just an endless growth, or you kind of take a stand, do something that may cost more in the long run, right? You kind of, you're still paying a monthly fee, right? Be it rent or be it mortgage, and in this scenario, you could actually get roommates, you can have people come in, right? You can do things to help offset your costs, right? When you're renting, you're at the mercy of everybody else.
It's a forced rent.
Yeah, you're at the mercy of, of everything around you. And when we have students that we can't take care of in our district, my understanding of this is we have to go to these other places and we're at the mercy of what they want to charge us. This is like taking control of our situation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's, so it seems like it's the way, it's, we're here to be strategic, that's strategic.
What's the max capacity for the program that you're envisioning?
I don't think we've really studied it to that level where I could definitively, definitively give that to you. She had about like four to five classrooms of five to six students comfortably, and then there's a large, in a, in a building we're looking at, there's a large downstairs area that she sees for various activities, that's an area you could always look at differently for expansion.
Let me, let me just do the, just a quick pause, because I think we're going really deep, which is great, actually, I love it, but let me, just so we're all clear, I don't want us walking out with any confusion, let's just take a step back for a second. If I'm hearing everybody correct, we are interested in this concept of purchasing a property and bringing some of our students back.
Absolutely.
I'd love to see the numbers.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Concept.
Yeah, I'd love a concept. Concept, right.
Love the concept.
Sharon?
Brian spoke to me.
Okay. You have a proxy, Brian, great.
When you say numbers, just?
It's early stages.
Right, we're just talking, we just, we're just, again, we're just not, we're not necessarily trying to resolve the issue tonight, we're just trying to give them some direction, so I just want to make sure we're all in this.
Conceptually, it feels good.
I love the idea of controlling it a little bit, like Josh was saying, is, I mean, because the way it is now, we have no control, we're just, those numbers are what they are, we have to pay and we have to outplace and whatever, and we can't control that.
And those, and those schools by and large, on the outside, are all at capacity with waiting lists. So, it's, it's a, a situation from a market standpoint that's only going to continue to go in one way, to your point.
Not if it were the numbers, right? Don't do anything numbers.
I just wanted to give you an opportunity to get in here as the budget guru. I mean, any, anything you want to add here on this?
No, I'm honestly just here to listen to the conversation and see where you guys are all at and start like planning for like, you know, do you move forward, do you know what you're doing, kind of looking at different scenarios.
What's with the grant you mentioned earlier, how does that play?
So, it's, it's interesting, Amy actually brought the opportunity to our team's attention, and it's a congressional grant. I don't know too much about the background of them, but they're large earmarked dollars. So, we filled out a proposal for a full-scale operation, like what it would, you know, the grant was like two point something million.
Twenty million, twenty seven.
Yeah, we included the cost of the real estate, full staffing, everything else to see where we could go on that. I'm not sure on the timeline, but, you know, I don't feel comfortable waiting on that and not at least getting some preliminary information to you on, hey, this is what a process would look like to try to make this happen, because it's collaborative with the town, is what it is. We don't have purchasing power. It would be a Board of Selectment purchase with a Board of Finance approval. So, that's how the, how the system works. Now, I've had some preliminary conversations with the town manager to introduce them to the concept and get them to understand. I have as well with Lisa Hefner, the Chair of the Board of Finance. So, I think both parties are very open to listening. I know you've talked to women still, not like, hey, yeah, we're, but yeah, let's, let's figure out a timeline to talk about this. I told them we had this meeting and hopefully coming out of that, we could develop a series of conversations to develop the concept further.
Does the property that you guys are thinking about allow for expansion of this space to building over time if we wanted to phase three, phase four, add different kinds of profiles for students and expand programming that way?
I'd have to go back and ask that question, I know the property goes pretty deep into the woods, I don't know if it's what winds behind it.
And, and Blake just asked that, because you spoke of other programs that have wait lists, right? So, that means that we could quickly get there ourselves, and then what are we going to do?
Right. Yeah, no, those are good questions. Thank you.
Great. Anything else, questions?
It's exciting, it's an exciting concept. I mean, I don't know, you guys are pretty jazzed about it.
I like that there's Ellington and Glastonbury, I've done it before, so it's not like you're going in blind.
No.
But that Glastonbury one's got to be pretty big then, because they have 55 just?
Yeah, well, it's an entire school, so the way, and it's developed over like?
Over time, 100 percent.
Is it six, seven years now, I think?
Yes.
Maybe even more than that, it started as a high school program and then has grown to a K to 12 program. It has a principal, it, I mean, it is a fully staffed.
It's a full school staff. It might be almost a decade now that they started.
Five.
And, you know, as we talk about all the time, we're strapped for space, right? So, if we can make this happen, we can get some, free up some space in other places as well. So, hopefully this is a, you know, multiple, multiple things all around.
Well, just so I'm clear, but we're telling a flame that's who are out of our district now, needs a this space, right? Yeah, so we're?
A combination.
Yeah.
Eventually, over time.
Phase one would be a, a home for our alternate school, that's at the high school first.
Okay.
We'll be bringing up space.
We're not really freeing up space in our current.
It would just be modular, modular space.
Which we have to replace anyway would be gone. Okay.
Over time, yeah.
Yeah. Modulators are only supposed to last 20 years. In a good day.
I'm pretty sure tariffs will be like 1980.
Yeah. You start replacing rooms on module issues, it's kind of a waste of money.
Great.
I'll put up the questions around the property expansion and the modulars up on the parking lot.
Again, one, last call for questions, comments?
I have one more thing.
Please.
Is that, I, I know it's not today, and so I'm not telling you, but down the line, it'd be interesting to see like, if we do this, what is the number of, like at these, at, out of district places we place them, what are the teacher to staff, or teacher to students ratio, and how would that play? Would that equal dollar wise for that staffing? You know, that'd be interesting to see.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably?
But I love the idea.
Yeah, no, but I think that's part of the next conversation, right? And as Matt said, that, where we roll into the budget.
That's what I was going to ask. The impact of this year's budget would be nothing?
Nothing, yeah. Only because if we do move forward with the real estate purchase, we, I mean, there's an impact to the town.
Correct.
So, overall impact, yes, operating budget to the Board of Ed.
Actually.
Do you guys feel you have the direction you?
Yeah, very good.
Okay, great. We have one last call.
So, so, well, one more thing. So, I, I think we're given the okay to pursue, right? And then you'll come back to us with the numbers and then we'll talk again? Is that right?
Well, come back with the, I guess I have to clarify, so come back with the numbers, our board wouldn't be involved probably in making?
The purchase decision.
The real estate numbers, no. So, anything in program development by, beyond that, absolutely.
Right, so, but I'm thinking you'll come back and say, the space is there, this is what the layout is going to be, because the next session, you're going to come to us with the space too.
Yes.
Right? And then that's where we're going to really start, really digging in around the numbers, how many people?
Right.[1794.47]
Can the space handle it, so that's why.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So this for me, like moving forward is a perfect example of a large scale kind of issue topic that needs to be quantified actually in the strategic plan as a goal, either on sustainable investments or student, wherever we wanna put it, so that it's a constant loop of what we're talking about. But yeah, you're right on the money.
Yeah, so this would be a ideally a money saver.
Yes, yeah.
Do you think it would ever have the potential to be a moneymaker?
You know, I I've I've inquired about that, I think it can be short term, but over time, it's it's a sustainer, it's not a maker because the needs continue to evolve. So it's more of a of an offset in a, we're able to provide both a better program and a better financial deal to other districts than an outside independent company is.
But but Matt, do you, I mean, as far as other districts though, because you, like you said, excuse me, a lot of districts are doing the same or having the same challenge, right? And so you gotta think that they're starting to think about doing the same thing because it's cost effective.
Right.
Right? But I mean, there's smaller districts like neighboring towns that I'm sure we can market to, right? Because they they just can't handle the cost, right?
And and obviously, this isn't the last, this will be recurring, I think I'm on the agenda, this is too big, not too. So great, awesome, that we're off to a great start, appreciate it. In boldy, but a goodie. Um sixth grade moved to.
No.
The sixth grade moved to um Henry James, right? Uh there's.
Yes, yes.
There's a, hold on, there's a, let me at least get there before you say it. There's a timeline, uh and you're right, because it's been more than a few years, right?
That.
This board blessed that move, right? And we had multiple town, you know, public meetings about that and that was the decision we arrived at.
Twenty?
Twenty, twenty, I'm being reminded. Because.
We put it during COVID.
And the way that that was supposed to move, right, that was supposed to move in conjunction with Latimer. And it quickly got uh cross with infrastructure, right? So we had to split them. Um and then we moved the, la- obviously we moved Latimer first. We are at the point, you know, as we've talked about space issues, we've talked about, even at the time, there was a conversation with the state about you may not be able to go back to Henry James since we just did the rent, the expansion there. So so the time, right, it has come back again. So the question is is for the group is, well, let me stop, does there anyone want to add to that?
No, I think that's a pretty good frame, you know, it was an interesting, I have to be honest, walk down memory lane, memory lane, memory lane when we put this document together because it was very clear what the direction of the board was. You know, we packaged these two programs together and that overall research study that we did. Um and then we had to give a priority within the package, right? That that is the only reason that we moved away from the sixth grade concept. It wasn't because people didn't support it, it ended up being, right, that it's an interesting dilemma. We desire to have a different model at the middle school. We need repaired space at the elementary school. That's how that decision got made, right? It was the need of the dilapidated building versus, yes, we wanna move in this direction, but we don't have to. Um and then once that happened, I feel like we're caught in the overall, right? It's the cycle of debt service and the conversation about how we how we manage it all. So I guess it's a it's a reprioritization conversation and then to go back and say, hey, what does that even look like? In terms of of how we get there, because right now we have that squadron concept way off in the distance, right? It's not even a tremendous substance yet. Um is it even on the sixth year, I don't know where it is, it's just right off, just right off of it right now, right? And when we were asked to get a look at that, it was a hundred million dollars. So it's, you know, how do we maybe relook at the state of where we are with all these facilities and kind of reprioritize and change the, change the conversation? I think that's what we're asking, is that where we are? And then we need to think about what that looks like. Because again, it's another topic that involves every other board and uh in town, but it's not, I don't feel it's something that needs to be re researched, relaunched. I mean, I think we can just communicate that this is where we were, this is what happened and we're interested in revitalizing what the board's vision was of the school. And then it's a matter of how you get there, because the price tag at that time was thirty six to.
Thirty. Thirty five, thirty six.
Just to add the wing based on what Tecton felt they needed to do to the cafeteria and other areas. So that can always be relooked at, right? But there's design money and there's process and there's just things we need to do.
Do we have this ser- I, it might be in here, the survey, remember we sent out the survey and those, the teachers was like eighty percent approve or nine, and the parents was like sixty, so it was favorable. Do you remember those numbers?
We we have that, I can dig that back out for you, but your memory is spot on.
It's right about that.
Yeah.
Overwhelmingly, the teachers were up there, the parents was the majority, but I don't remember what.
Anecdotally, every sixth grade teacher I have talked to in the last couple of months has said sixth grade needs.
Oh, no, no, the the survey data was in there.
Yeah.
It's like not even a hesitation on any sixth.
We gave, we gave three options, there was um leave it as it is configured currently. Think about a separate five, six school or six moving to where seven and eight is. And that option came out as the the preferred option by far with the staff and um sort of by enough with the parents.
So given that everybody then is on board and I think everyone now is on board and we have the study done and all of them are done, obviously there's updating of costs into them, what do you need from us to move that forward?
Hold on, hold on, yeah, so there's a couple of questions, I just want to make sure we're all clear, right? I I think, again, conceptually, I think what I'm hearing is that, yeah, I think we're all on board with sixth grade. But let's, let's be clear though, if if we move forward in that direction, squadrons push back even more.
That's right.
And I'm I'm okay with however we land there, but we all need to be okay with that decision. You won't be able to do this, the reality of what's going on, we will not be able to do those anytime soon, or in 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 conjunction with each other.
So Jeff, I think, I think, I think too, the challenge with that, and I think it it warrants, I mean, it's not tonight, that deeper conversation of when Tecton did this study, because of how squadron's currently constructed and how full it is, it it becomes very hard to envision looking at that facility and talking about a renovation because there's nowhere to put anybody. We may have to, like, I think it's worth the brainstorm and the concept of whether you can get there or not. How do you look at squadron differently, is squadron now not a rebuild? If sixth grade comes out, is it some kind of renovate where you either add some mods over there and now you freed up sixth grade? And you can grab ten rooms at a time? And it's more of a renovation like we did in phase one and two of Henry James where we redid the instructional spaces. But it wasn't a tear down and build up.
Well, not only.
I mean, I just think there's a lot at play there because that building's not in great shape either.
I mean, that makes a lot of sense and you also now have can free up spaces squadron with the Latimer renovation, right? Preschool's moving over, so more states will be freed up there and sixth grade moves out, so.
It becomes a completely different.
It's a different conversation than a hundred million dollar tear down.
Which I think would happen.
And if sixth grade moves out, it doesn't move out of only squadron.
That's right.
You have sixth grade rooms at two, three, and central.
Yeah, you, yeah, so it's a multi, you know, like anything, there was a reason why we had twenty meetings when we had these topics, right? It 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 becomes a really comprehensive look at at where you're headed with things.
That's what I was gonna say too, Jeff, is it, you know, I think we all do agree on Henry James, but before we can just pull the trigger, I think we do, it's a precursor discussion, right? You know, and then we say yay, you know? Because I I can hear, you know, Principal Heaven, you know, saying, you know, I mean, because we walked through there, right? We walked through squadron line and we all know what's happening, we know the families even there, you know, we start talking, it's like, well, what about us, you know?
Yeah, and it's it's, be clear, it's the same building it was in nineteen sixty nine when it was built.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The same building.
Yeah, so.
And it's got problems.
Yeah, it really does.
So would this be part of the strategic plan we're looking into? Or how are the, I guess my question is, what's the process for having these sort of more detailed conversations about all of the shift and the comp- the complexities that go with the decision, move six, move some over?
So I I, to answer your question, I I say yes, it's formally part of that plan. But I think if we're interested in furthering this conversation, we need to go back and I'd like to try to work with my team and frame out like, hey, what would some of these conversations with what you guys look like? What is some more of the information we need to bring forward? And kind of develop, you you know what I mean, bring something back in the fall of, hey, we've looked at this, we've contacted Tecton, we've asked for a re, you know what I mean? Just kind of lay out the roadmap of how to give us something to really look at and start to communicate.
So not that anyone asks my view, but my view is that that should be done so that, because we can't have these conversations in the vacuum about squadron and about Henry James, we need to have them all together. So if that work can be done so we can have the more fulsome conversation, I think it's in the best interest of the district to do that.
I I agree, and I think the other piece is we have to figure out how to engage the board of finance in this and Amy, you can help me with this one, in the, in this conversation early. Because one of the challenges I think we ran into with the great work that was done by Tecton on both the maintenance side and the long term visioning was, we had all the work and all the vision and we just weren't able to support it with the dollars. So what's the collective nature upfront of people understanding what we're trying to do and the appetite to either come outside of the policy they have or engage in another conversation about where these things sit long term? Otherwise, we end up, right, like it's, we end up in the same spot of doing one project every twenty, twenty years and it does, you don't make progress.
But your. Your comment is 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 spot on, it's really, well, a couple of people have said it's really part of larger con- conversation. And really tonight, since we haven't really talked about it in so long, quite frankly, I just wanted to make sure we still have the blessing of the board to kind of go forward. So I think now that they they're hearing that we're on board, they can, we can get into those kind of conversations.
And I'm I'm not pushing back on your comment about sixth grade teachers, but I do recall at two of the schools, adamantly for keeping sixth grade.
I'm gonna say your anecdotal thing is not what I have heard, so.
Yeah, so.
We have lots of different anecdotes.
So there was.
It was.
Yeah.
Sixth grade, they like their sixth.
So I do, I do think, and what I said to him.
But overall, the danger was very strong.
Finally to Matt, like, I totally, I do support, I do think that sixth grade should move to Henry James. But I just don't, I just, what I wanted to avoid is us driving forward with squadrons, you know, rebuilt without stopping for seconds and saying, hey, let's make sure we look at the whole plant picture first. It could be at the end of the day, sixth grade can't move and we can only do squadron and that will be the case, but.
You know, are you able to look at both and do a little, little less than the grand scale Tecton view, right? Because you gotta remember, Tecton was pricing so many things for us. Outside of Latimer, they were just broad views on things, right?
Right, very simple.
So do you really need all of that at Henry James or do you just need to expand the footprint? What do you need at at Squadron Line to make that building more functioning? And if two, if if both of those are to a very different degree, hey, can you have a conversation about coupling them again or doing them within three years? I don't know, you know?
And is it time to bring back facilities enrollment?
Right, yeah, because I was gonna ask.
I mean, that's a great place to this conversation.
Yeah.
Cause you guys are going from district to district.
Absolutely, since it's been four, four years.
Yeah.
I I I think that conversation, I mean, I know that group blessed it, but I I.
Well, we couldn't even reconstitute that group just because it's been so long.
I think, yeah, I think.
But that could be part of what we bring back, right?
But you wouldn't start then, I mean, it was blessed.
Where do you have the conversations?
Right, it it was blessed, I mean, you wouldn't start from.
No, no, I think, I, honest, I honestly, I think I might have a conversation. Again, it's four years, you may not find the same people, a long time's gone past, I think you're gonna same, get the same result, but I I don't, I'm not sure I feel comfortable just flat, just moving forward by ourselves, but honestly.
What was the makeup of that committee? Is it, is it more bad, is it, what is it?
Yeah, a little everybody, yeah, very collaborative.
Everybody in town.
You went from school to school and you guys have meetings and open dialogues, open forums, right, yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, it was great. But that's a committee over time that served a lot of functions, I mean, when I first came in as superintendent, it was about the decline of enrollment and trying to either close a school or get rid of modulars, so it was uh, it's it's.
Are those, are those minutes on the, on our books, eh?
The minutes of.
Facility enrollment?
I don't know if it's still all out there, I'd have to check.
I don't know.
I mean, Kate was able to grab all minutes pretty, pretty easily.
Yeah, I kind of, I'm feeling they're accessible, someone.
Yeah, they 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 were, I mean, because I remember we had a little special section on it.
But let us develop a little process to come back, that, yay or nay, and then figure out where we're really going with it.
Let me just ask the the question and then anybody wanna keep sixth grade where it's at?
No.
All right.
I'd like more discussion, I mean, you know, I'm up for the concept of it.
Yeah.
And I I agree with what you said about, you know, four years is a long time, because, whatever, twenty fifteen years ago, we did a big project at the high school, then we did the Henry James and we did Latimer. I'd love to know the appetite of the town to take on another project, because there's been a lot of chatter about whoa.
Right.
You know, we just need to be cognizant of it, that's all. We don't wanna assume, we don't wanna assume that everybody in the town wants to just keep firing out big projects.
Yep.
There's been a lot of chatter in what?
That's what I was getting ready to say.
No, just people.
I think it's cost, I think it's finance.
Financial chat.
It's finance, finance, yeah, not so much the the move of six, yeah.
So finance, a finance cost.
Correct.
Cause I was getting ready to say, if if folks come back and say no on six, what are you guys gonna say? I mean, you know, I mean, I.
I think it could be relaun- once we have a plan, it could be relaunched as a revisit to what was decided on, a history of it. I mean, there are a myriad of ways, absolutely, to communicate.
Yes, thank you.
I think, I think a big, I think a big part of the thinking too was that if you could get a sixth grade wing built, that you immediately got relief from all of your space problems at all five elementary schools.
And then maybe we could also revisit our thinking about preschools.
Yes.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't just a space discussion, it was a, there was a financial benefit to it, it was invest in your schools or build something and then we stopped
and it was.
the two million fix here, the two million fix there and like all that patches or give the bandits, yeah, and all that stuff.
So if we were to, I guess the thing I'm trying, so the so's enrollment kind of have their, Ben, right, it's Ben here, I agree with you, Jeff, right? Go back, take a look. Squad, you had mentioned maybe we can couple squadron and six. I guess my question would be, if, I'm just hearing six can do a lot of good for a lot of people, a lot of ways. Smaller ticket item than squadron.
Yeah.
What is the benefit of attaching that to squadron in any, it was attached to Latimer and kind of fell off, right? I guess I just, it's not clear to me the benefit of the coupling if we're worried about the tag and all that. Do you take the win where you can get it and then try and get squadron? I guess I'm just wondering people.
I think that's all, I think.
It's also those numbers.
That's right.
Yeah, I think the 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 downside is it's harder to pass a bigger number and we haven't been successful with it before when we had things coupled, right?
Right, exactly.
So I don't just be that judge, if that becomes your top priority, I think you could have a plan to to sell that to the community. I think the down, the only downside is, we thought we were up next, but let's, you know, the honest part of that is, it's not even on the plan now.
Right, right.
So we haven't had substantive conversations about what that rebuild would look like versus renovation. I mean, I said last year in our meeting, I think we all have to understand, we have it out there as a tear down and a new build. When we get to the point of real conversation, we'll have to weigh that against what a renovation looks like, that's only fair to the community. You can't come out and just say, this is, this is the option and the only way to go, I don't.
Don't hope any of the other part of the conversation too, all around.
So.
I would just say it's so far out, but just to kind of say, because of the way this is where Latimer's got, and then it'll be six or squadron, squadron, six, right? I do think down the road, when we get to the other three, I would say those almost need to be packaged. I've said this, because I feel like if you get to a point where there's just one left and there's just the fatigue, that that one, that district, that one or two may just be left out to dry, quite honestly.
And if you don't eventually package something, or you can speak to this, you know, have a comprehensive approach,
Yeah.
your new high school renovation that everybody talks about, that's twenty years old already?
Right.
It's twenty years.
At what point do you take care of your flagship operation that, right, you, they end up.
Correct.
No, exactly.
The same, same challenge of so many capital needs.
Yep.
On both the board of that side and, you know, respectfully on the town side too, to think about.
You get where Farming Thing got to last year, two years ago, where they had to spend a hundred and thirty million on high school.
Right.
That price tag.
Right.
Took a couple of votes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. I think you have a little direction, right? This is great.
This will be Neil from talking about retirement. Right, we got him.
Back in his wheel, that's the goal. That's my goal today. Great, no, thank you. Appreciate that, that discussion. So obviously more to come.
Don't say that stuff without a yell.
I'm the one, um, well, actually, I guess I shouldn't. I, I was very interested in this next topic, really more so, I wanna say. Year ago, something like that, we had conversations about discipline and. Kind of really just never came back to them. So I was just curious on kind of where we're at. Just an update, that, that kind of thing. Nothing really more, nothing, nothing else than that. So I don't know, you guys wanna?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll kick this to Sue in, in a little bit, but the way we had looked at that topic was we had had some real. Um, solid conversations as we were bringing in a new high school principal. Um, about the state of affairs with discipline at Sims Very High School and really. Kind of I think Maggie heard too, the focus of the board and desire to make some changes. What can we do with staff? What can we do with procedures and protocols? Um, to tighten things up a little bit. So, um, I would have Sue kind of start there. I think we've. Really, Maggie has really led with her staff some good changes there. I think, um. You know, I think the cul- culture has palpably improved in a relatively short period of time and I think it's about adult presence. And I think it's about due diligence and expectations. I think it's been really nice to see, uh, the response on that. Uh, we've got some early survey results back about, uh, from parents, uh, that we just, uh, uh, just comments. On the culture of Sims Very High, which were nice to see. So I'm gonna kick that to Sue. So they made some major changes. You'll remember going back to the beginning of the year. There are a lot of questions and buzz about parents and what we were doing with passes, what we were doing with bathrooms and. Um, I think it's, it's kind of settled and we're in a, we're in a much better place, but.
I, I definitely think so. And not only that, the conversations were happening here at the board, but. Maggie and the administrative team did get feedback from students. Saying, in addition, we want things to get better in our bathrooms and our hallways, feeling a little chaotic. So they took that on. So in your background materials, uh, we framed it out around what steps did they take? And as Matt shared, there was a commitment from Jump with that administrative team around visibility. In these more unstructured times, in the mornings, in the afternoons, and. They put some systemness to that and some commitment to that. And students pay attention to that. Staff pays attention to that. So when you're asking for staff to also help you out and be present and visible. The administrative team was leading by example. So I think that that was a, the, a huge step. Um, they also, on the proactive and fun side, they increased times to come together. That was another thing that teams were saying of. We miss our pep rallies. We miss coming together. We miss this concept of school spirit. So they've increased pep rallies, but they've also, they have a different flavor and different things have been highlighted. Whether it be the upcoming, um, student production and yes, the athletics and yes, around. Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Week. I mean, those have been focal points. There have been competitions with staff and students. There's always some kind of Olympic events or field games and just this whole concept of spirit. And so, you know, you always get a little nervous as, as former school administrators. When you're bringing twelve hundred teenagers into one space and letting them be rowdy. And our students responded beautifully every single time. So that's part of the, the, um, kind of culture shift. And then you'll see some other things that they specifically had done around passes. They put monitors, um, in staff. That's one of their staff duties outside of the bathrooms. There's a sign in, there's a sign out process. Um, you know that they put vape sensors in the bathrooms as of late and. They've really tightened up for students what expectations are regarding some of the lunch wave passing time. So it's, we have a plan, we're communicating that plan and we're following through with that plan. And so we shared with you just some big picture data, um, from last year about this time to this year. And we're seeing some really positive trends in the right direction.
Ask Luke's first question then. Chairman's prerogative. Just, um, just the. How the, how the teachers feeling about this? Are they bought in? Are they engaged in it? Um, cause we obviously have some. Questions about that.
We like, the, the adults like the structure then, right? So one of the things that we're committed to doing, not just at the high school. But across all of our schools is, um, eliciting some of this feedback on climate and culture. So we're in the process of that right now. Uh, our teams take that very seriously. We'll be looking at that data to see more specific pieces about staff, but anecdotally. It's a very positive response.
So I, I'm, I'm gonna just go back even to that, like. And this can go offline too, but you know, when we talk climate and culture, sometimes I think that that's just a catchall for everyone. All right? And so, you know, what are we really getting at with that? And then. You know, what does that data really look like? Because I, I look at it and say, for those who say. The climate and culture, if you're asking specifically hasn't changed, then what are we doing to monitor that? Because those are opportunities for growth and improvement, right?
Hundred percent.
And, and so that's the thing that I don't think we ever hear about. Cause I mean, it's not a perfect world, it's not, you know what I mean? So where are those areas that people are really saying they wish could be different?
So I, I'll say this is what we assess when we're talking about that climate and culture and. I can most certainly show you what the student survey looked like and what does the adult survey look like, staff and families. Uh, the first big issue is around safety. Do you feel safe? Do you face, feel safe physically? Um, so that you can go about your business of learning. So there's a whole concept around safety, um. About physical and emotional safety.
Okay.
Uh, there's a huge emphasis on belonging. Do you feel like you have a space here? Do you feel like this is your high school? Are you seen here? Are there activities that are of interest to you? Do adults care about you? How do you know? Do you feel like your teachers are invested in you just beyond them being the, the teacher and the sage of content in their classroom? So that's another huge component. And then I think the third piece is, what do we need to do about it? What are some other things? Kind of this open-ended nature of what additional feedback do you wanna give? So we look at those themes in a statistical way. Uh, then we look at the, some of those next steps. And it really informs, I mean, that's where these steps came from is, hey, we need to respond in a different way again. Halls and bathrooms feeling a little chaotic. So we take very specific steps to address that.
So, and the reason I say that is cause, you know, in turn, there, there was a whole discussion around, um, you know, teachers feeling like. They don't have the ability to really, I don't wanna say rein in, but you guys helped me from that discussion. Um, but they feel like they don't have the support around discipline, right? And so.
Where was that discussion?
I brought it up. We had it the other day.
Okay.
Um, certain, you know, teachers that I've talked to, industry, district now, just generally have a feeling that. For example, around cell phones, right? That there's not a lot of administrative support because. The parents then come back and complain and then the administration sort of.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, 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 that's fine.
Yeah, like that kind of, that kind of communication and that kind of feeling of a lack of support with respect to how to discipline, when to discipline. That is gonna be backed up.
We'll, we'll get to, we'll get to cell phones. But let me, let me, but let me just gently push back a little bit. If I have a student in class. Who is distracted because they're on their cellphone. I don't understand why there's hesitation to discipline. That student at that moment. Is not paying attention to the class I'm leading.
That's right.
It's not about, it's not even about the cellphone at that point. It's about they're not paying attention and they're not getting the instruction they're supposed to be getting. And they're potentially disruptive to other students.
I agree a hundred percent.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not following why there has attempt.
I mean, I think there's a lot of layers, Jeff, of, I mean, which would probably be a different conversation of, okay, what does discipline look like for you in that situation? And it could live very differently in a class when you have twenty-six kids in front of you. Is that an office referral? Is that a redirection? What is that, right? So, um. It, it's, it's interesting, yeah.
So I've lived in high schools for a long, 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 long time and every adult's gonna have a different threshold for how they pick their battles. You know, I mean, I think the cell phones are a unique challenge. Like I. Left Sims Very High School's principal in two thousand fifteen, kids were just getting smartphones. They had phones before that, they were, so that's a real challenge. But I mean, just cycle through what it's gonna be. I mean. We used to bet all about hats like nobody's business. You know, I pick what your thing is, that you're gonna, there's always gonna be a, um. Difficulty in norming an entire building about what's important around teenage behavior. Which is naturally pushing back against the thoughts. Not in a mean spirited way, it's on their wire, that's what they do.
That's what they're supposed to do.
I, oh.
And some of us love it and others don't.
To get back to discipline, right? And we'll go to the telephone later, but the discipline stuff is. One is, I wanted to add to what Sue was saying about that. I don't know if you get them because you're not, um, because you don't have kids in the system, but like. All the schools do that. This is, this is just the high school, but all the elementary schools do it and so does the middle school. So I think it's great data to have. And so if I had a Jen's favorite parking lot wishlist. Um, it would be the surveys, the survey data shown for next year, like what, like could we have almost a board of ed meeting later on? About that data next year or something, you know? And then, um. On a side note, Jen's wishlist, which is this the forum for or not? But I do think that see, this is great and I do think it's a, it's, it's great data and I think that this is, makes sense. I would love to see a follow-up on like how successful those vapors, vape sensors are. And then whether or not all the bathrooms ever get to be opened again at Sims Very High School. And then, um, and to advocate, as I have had two seniors already. I do think, and again, is it possible? I don't know, cause I'm not in there. But seniors should be able to, because we want to have kids leaving here to be successful in college. And so. Do those kids or young adults, let's say seventeen, eighteen-year-olds have any, at least when I was in high school, like. Any extra privileges that they can earn or do, that they don't need to always have. Like my daughter got busted so many times on that wave. That lunch wave pattern, she wants to go sit in the teacher's room, like, are we allowing seniors and older students to owe some discretion? For parking lot later on. And then the other last thing was the total class cuts. How is that determined?
What do you mean? How is the data point?
Like, how do you figure that out versus, like, is it just all the kids who are in power school that don't have a parent's excuse? Like, how do you?
Right, so if a student isn't, um, noted as excused, they should be in your class and they're not. And sometimes it's, there is a legitimate reason that, but it gets put into the system as a referral for a cut.
And so are those numbers that could have been legit in this number?
They would have been cleaned up.
They would have been cleaned up out of power school.
So these are probably the, the, in power school, the unexcused absences. These are, I'm assuming that number would be right.
Where students were supposed to be in an assigned place and they didn't come, whether that, and that could be a study hall.
Sure.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Karen. You're passing.
Yeah, what does, before we go any further, total number of students OSS and ISS.
Out of school.
Out of school suspension and in school suspension.
Okay, so, um, my question is going back up, total drug referrals, it went from five to ten. Can you explain a little bit more about the drug referrals, what kind, what type, how?
Um, I can't give you specifics on that certainly, but I'll say I, I think we tightened up some things. I think that the vape sensors are. Doing their job and so. I'm not surprised by the uptick.
But this is just a, a parent or not, a teacher saying, hello administrators, this child was dealing with. Could be nicotine, a vape.
So I'll be honest, on the, on, on the increase on, on the vape number there.
Yeah.
So five of those were in one shot when the vape sensor went up.
But that's what I was saying, like.
So drug referrals.
Drug referrals could just be nicotine. It doesn't have to be cocaine.
I don't think this drug referrals is nicotine.
I don't, I don't think it's, I think it's drug. I don't think it's vape either. I didn't think it was vape either.
No, no, well, explain that again.
So that would be the increase, Lynn.
The increase.
There's more due diligence on it. There are sensors in the bathrooms now. And my point is you went from five to ten, without giving too much detail, one of those was relatively recently. It was four to five students in one place at one time that are giving you five.
So one incident, five.
Double our last year's instance.
Yes.
For vaping. So vaping is, is part of the drug referral category or not?
Sure, depending on what's in the vape.
What's in the vape.
Ah, all right, okay.
Okay, so THC in the vape.
Yeah, understood, okay.
Jeff, you know, just curious, the data here is the high school. Do we have, do we need, is there any appetite for middle school data? I'm just curious, right? Like I get elementary school is young, right? Elementary school, kids are growing, learning, it's, yeah, right. High school, like you know, right, they're teenagers pushing back, right? It's like the middle school's the feeder for the high school. New to this, don't know, do, has there been talk in the past about, like clearly something was needed at the high school? Has the middle school ever come up? Is there data? Is there anything we should be looking at? I'm just more curious.
Certainly you can.
No, I, I, I think it, I think it's worth a similar run. Um, we pulled this because of the conversations of. When the new principal was hired and what the board had required about at the time. That's why you have a snapshot of the high schools. Kind of to respond to some desires that the board had to see some things put in place. But yeah, I think it, I think it's a good conversation to have.
Thanks. So the other question that I have is regarding, uh, is, um, the. Officer Trevor.
S R, school resource officer.
Resource officer, right. And so I, the baseline, I understand the difference between the high school, you know. Dealing with things and then. O- officer Trevor, S R O, right? But how many, is there, is there a report that we? Or you get that documents his interactions?
So there's an ongoing, um, and that's exactly what it is. That's actually a good way to phrase it. His interactions, right? So he may have, there may be a health-related situation. That he's involved with, that he would document and let us know. Um, a situation that involved drugs. The S R O would be involved with. It's not an arrest thing. It's just part of the conversation. So that needs to be, uh, documented as well. So we do get that, yeah.
So is that something that's, because it's, okay, where I'm going. You know, we, and you all know how I'm about data. We put these, um, the board approved that we have an S R O.
Yeah.
But is there? Data that shows that it's been beneficial for us to do that?
I think it's.
I would say, oh, can I just.
That's, that's an interesting, look, I don't know what data points you would wanna see. I, I would, I would point more to. You know, I'll use, use something kind of fills the bucket a little bit. When Todd Cushman got promoted. And the entire school community turned out to demonstrate the value there. In terms of hard data points, I think we'd have to think really hard about what we'd be looking for. What are we trying to measure?
So I, and, and I've had a conversation around Todd is different. He, his personality and all, it, it is. And I think everybody in the community would say that, you know? But I'm, I'm just looking and saying, we are, we are supportive of the S R O, which is great. You know, but there was also a reason why we really pushed for it, okay? And whatever that reason may have been, but there is data that you're getting. That, like you said, that there are some interactions that happen. And so. Is that, what I'm trying to really get at is the interactions that he may be having. Is there any potential insight into future behavioral data issues? That's where. That's where I really am.
Yeah. So Sharon, I was at Simsbury High School and the first Fred Sifat Vascalakis spoke, uh, was our first
Oh, right.
school resource officer twenty, twenty-one years ago. I mean, I do think that that was the era where police departments were ushering in community policing.
Right.
As like the notion of, we want students to understand that a police officer is a resource to them.
Right.
And thus the name, so in addition to Simsbury's program, I mean, I'm sure you, the, um, the network across the state of Connecticut, you've probably have ten times the number of school resource officers across the state that you would have had twenty years ago. Sort of all communities embraced the notion of a.
Yeah, that, yeah, and that's not my, I'm not, that's not my question really, it's really around, we're looking at this?
Yeah.
And just wondering.
Yeah, I, I, not to the top, but I, I mean, to just
Right. Yeah.
get to it, I think there is information from that data that would, if trends appeared, we would know and we could talk about it, for sure. There'd be insights, you know, if you had, you know,
repetitive drug and alcohol, if you had repetitive mental health issues that the P D was getting in, involved with, right?
I mean, I think it would give you some insights into
They actually.
how to provide supports to kids and families, because it becomes a very collaborative piece, but there are different roles.
Some of that data actually has informed presentations that the S R Os have done, whether it be in conjunction with Community for Care, whether it be parent series at the libraries around, hey, this is what we're seeing. Parents, this is how you can be aware, it's actually informed some of the parent series we've done in the past.
And you go, you go back to the phones a little bit, right?
Outside of.
I've gone, I've gone to them.
You, you go back to the phones a little bit, right? The consistent involvement and investigation that can occur sometimes of social media involvement. Police do get involved with that, depending on the content. Development of presentations for parents about awareness and how to monitor phones and, and pro, so that'd be an example of using the data for something like that.
So again, I'm, I'm just asking, because it's a resource that we approved to be in the school, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add that little side note story, like I was at Starbucks the other day and the new S R O was there. And yeah, to say that Todd is different, Todd was, how long was Todd there?
Over ten years.
Okay, so, so that is gonna be different, cause he's been there ten years.
No.
Different personalities, yeah.
The current S R O was there, and I apologize, so now I'm on television and I don't remember.
Michael Antieri.
And he was there and I went up to him and introduced myself to him, and while I'm standing there, at least eight other kids, high school kids, came up and were like, uh, joking with him and talking to him. So at lunch sometimes, he's right in that main room or whatever.
Yeah.
So at lunch, people are going to his room and socializing, so he's not just there, I think, for, or I didn't get the feeling he was just there for discipline and stuff like that.
No, it's probably.
No, they're absolutely not, and I loved it.
It's community stuff.
Yeah, it's not around discipline at all.
It's great to answer that.
Yeah.
Question on the numbers for the seven hundred and eleven, so did, we have twelve hundred students, right, at the high school, if I remember?
About.
So we assume this isn't like seven hundred and eleven different students?
No.
Do we have a sense for how many students this seven hundred and eleven referrals represents?
I could get that data, I could hedge a guess.
Yeah.
Usually it's around that fifteen, maybe fifteen percent of your student body, because those could be multiple kind of referrals. And I, I do wanna say this, this is a big bucket of grab that represents this number. This could be anything of, hey, this student was late to my class for the third time this week, and I'm referring them to their assistant principal to have a conversation about what's going on. So it could be anything a little more on the innocuous side to not, but I certainly can look into percentage of students represented by these numbers.
That's helpful, you answered my follow up question, just, goodbye.
Yeah, usually ninety percent of your referrals are from ten percent of the students.
Ten percent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good conversation, anybody else, anything? Great, we can move on. Um, assessments.
I'll take that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I want, I want you to, I was just gonna tee it up, but I think you're.
No, I just think, um,
Cause it's, cause it started in a great element.
We, we keep talking about it, and we, and we, and there have been years that we've been talking about it, and it, um, and it's, we're in a great place right now to discuss as we have, um, a lot of things in place. We, um, are reviewing, and now we have a clear plan to assess each of the, each of our disciplines. And every two years, we're gonna show a different, you know, we're gonna analyze a different discipline and show the positive, negative, and improvement places. And, um, this year it's art and social studies, and every two years we'll be reevaluating, and all of that information will be, you know, worked on, and it'll all be an edge planet too. So all, these are great opportunities for us to bring out to the community what we're seeing, what we're intend, what our intentions are, and, um, how things are constantly, are continuous improvement plan. And putting that together, we also are looking at assessments. Are we actually teaching, are our kids actually learning what we are asking them to learn? You know, how do, and how do we make sure that the knowledge and skills that they are, we're expecting them to get are being delivered and being, um, and the kids are using them? So we, we're doing this with the vision of the graduate work, and that, um, has had a really big kickoff, and we'll be, you guys will be hearing about that a lot next year, because we've talked a lot about it this year, but it's, um, we've got, we've worked really hard in the high school, but now we're trying to bring the competencies redefine basically, the competencies that are already in the, in the elementary schools, but the ones that, you know, how to make them in with, in line with the others. And, um, I think a lot of that is, how do we show these competencies? How do we assess these? How do we, do we do it formally, informally? What's the best methodology to do it where the parents and the families are learning, we're all learning at the same time? Um, and to that point, we also, I know everyone here has spoken at one point or another about the assessments in the high school, um, for testing and quizzes and alternate assessments, there are a lot of different ways that we can test students. I think, um, a big thing is testing and wanting to, you know, what is the best methodology? Do the kids, getting the test home and being able to correct them with their families, is that a positive? And should that be, should be working towards that? Um, these are things also that are important, I think over the years we've seen whenever we've tried to touch some of these sensitive subjects, as far as Board of Ed trying to tell the teachers how to teach. We definitely need the teachers on, in the conversation to talk about how they feel, they can do this and how they, why they feel certain ways, so we can have an honest conversation. Um, as to why we feel this way, and we have, we as, the curriculum committee, and I'm hoping the whole Board of Ed, um, have pushed um, and directed Maggie Seidel and Sue to come back to us in the fall with a plan on answering some of these questions and getting a group together to do, like a focus group to, you know, what are the best, best, best processes? So that's my kickoff to that. What's anyone else's thoughts on those things?
Sue, you wanna add that, I mean, cause first of all, Tara, thank you for that, thanks for the whole curriculum committee, you guys have done a lot of work in this area, I mean, a lot of work, so I greatly appreciate it. Um, it's been great.
More to come.
More to work, uh, but since you're intimately involved with anything to add from your.
No, I, I think it's just, we always look at assessment as how do we determine what we value? That's what we should be assessing. And I think that there needs to, we, at one point, we had an assessment think tank to really look at that globally, K through twelve. I think that there is a particular, um, kind of offshoot certainly of the V O G competencies, and how did we start doing that at the high school this year, and trying to find that Goldilocks fit of giving students feedback. Assessment is all about giving kids feedback about what they're doing well, what they've demonstrated so far, what they haven't demonstrated yet. So there could be a plan for growth, right? So how do we find that Goldilocks standard with the V O G competencies? Where do we start assessing them? We've made some pretty good argument that we've been assessing V O G competencies right in our elementary report card for a really long time, we just haven't been calling it that. So how do we start being clearer about what that looks like when you're a kindergartner? To when you are getting your diploma and going on to career or, or college or work. Um, and then there is a very specific issue about tests and quizzes and students getting them back. So I think it was a great discussion, um, Maggie was at the table with it, and I think we have more work to do, as you eloquently shared Tara, about how do we get teacher's voice in that plan and to come back to you in the fall with some next steps.
Oh.
Okay, so I had to ask Jen about this one, but, um, so I'm not on curriculum, um, my kids are not, like, I'm speaking of my children, they're not great test takers. So I can speak just for myself, and I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are, but, um, I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't wanna overstep here, but I think from, from my family, it's, they care about their grades, right? And then they, 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 if they don't do well on tests, it negatively affects their grades. If they're getting hundred, 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 hundred on all the homework and the projects, and they get like a seventy, and then they get the B minus for the grade, because the test is like eighty-five percent of the grade, it crushes them, um. And with that said, I think the teachers who allow points back, corrections and that sort of thing is very positive. Um, because then they're actually learning and retaining the information from my experience.
So they're gonna relook or they're gonna.
Yeah, to allow them, you know, my kids stress over studying for tests.
Yeah.
I think that's a pretty fair statement for most people.
Yeah.
Correct, mine too.
And, and when the test is a, I don't know what the rules are, but when the tests are over the, a large portion of the grade, it's tough, I think it's great that our finals and our midterms, the percentage of, it's like low now. I don't know if it's always low, but like the midterm is like five percent or something, it's like, so if you've got an A in a class and you get a B on the midterm, it's not gonna bring you down to a B plus or what, you know?
No, I know, I think they're. How you weight the test is important to the part of you, so and what have a weight.
That sort of thing. Yeah. Yeah.
So Brian, I think it.
I don't know, that's just a general from where I see it.
Yeah, that's interesting.
No, I, I appreciate that, and back, it was actually in twenty fifteen, I dug up some old documents that we had around this think tank, and it was to talk philosophically about how do we really ascertain what, first of all, what do we want kids to know and be able to do? And then how do we allow kids to demonstrate that? And there's a lot of different ways that we can do that. So I think coming back to some of that good work that was done, highlighting again, dare I say in the next strategic plan, and really putting some specifics to that, I think it would be, um, a very good use of our time.
And the last thing I'll say to Jen real quick is, I don't know what the policy is in, in, in terms of like what our teachers do in terms of preparing the students for the tests, like reviewing material and whatnot, but my wife teaches and she always does a, a whatever.
Stud gun?
Study, like a, the prep day, the day before, a few days before, like my children, I don't know if they get that, they usually get a handout that they have to complete like the night before or the, the, the week before, I don't know, like.
So it's interesting, that's part of that conversation, I don't know.
So, so, I just wanted to add, like, just to, just to, on top of what you're, like, I, I just wrote down here, like, one of the things that, like, cause I felt the same way, but I'm taking my own kids sort of out of the mix. I think that Sue and Maggie were great at, and I think we all agreed, that the goal was to be, you know, find a common, you know, best partner practices for the teacher, students and families to work together. And are the tests consistent across the classes? Like how does that work? Is one teacher giving a different test than another teacher? And so all of that, and who all, um, percent back, right, and who gives a percent back and who doesn't give the percent back? All that stuff is the great work that Sue and those, and her team are doing and working on now. So I don't think there's really an update now, but I think that we're all the same age.
No, the update is that they're coming in the fall to figure out how to sit down with teachers to have these conversations.
That's great.
But all of that information should come to Sue or myself, I mean, if these are thoughts, cause I've had the, the exact same conversation with you, how many times?
Yeah.
I mean, we all know.
Frequently.
That's our, that's our job here, is to look out for our students and, um, best practices.
That's right.
And with today's technology, there's no way we can't shift that, make it easy.
So I'm gonna just say that, um, you know, I think from a standpoint of the community, I think parents will be happy to hear, um, that we're taking that look, cause I think it's been a discussion for, I'm just gonna say for, as long as I've been on the board. And, um, so I guess more to come, is all I'm gonna say. But I, I just think we need to do something.
So I have a related question, before you get to assessments and prepping for, you gotta figure out the study skills portion of it. So I would like to talk about how, when you're considering the studies, the, the assessments and how we're gonna deliver those assessments, and how are we preparing our students for those assessments? What are we doing to teach our students study skills at an early age and continuously as they grow in all of the subjects? Um, and I don't know if it's because of COVID and things that changed as a result of that, or this was prior to, because my oldest isn't that great, so we went through COVID in middle school and, uh, the end of sixth grade, but I, it seems to me that there's a why, I, I've felt that there's a lack of formalized instruction on study skills to get our kids ready for whatever assistance we decide are appropriate based on the work that you guys are doing.
No, and I was to add on that, and obviously we've got kids the same age. And to sort of pair with what Brian was saying, I think some of these kids think studying is just studying the study guide.
Right.
They don't, so there are.
They don't know how to, you know, the whole package is what it is to learn, to be a, to know how to learn and to study and to build those skills.
Right.
Yeah.
I think we need to work on doing a better job at here.
Yeah, and I think that's.
You don't want them.
You, you did discuss this in the, in the curriculum as well.
And there are two ways to look at it, right? You could look at it as a separate link, like you teach study skills and teach it as a course or an offshoot. In one of the components, as we're bringing back curriculum review by content, is to ask those questions around what are the content specific study skills? How does it live in social studies that might be different from English language arts, that might be different from math? And how do you directly infuse those study skills into the curriculum when you're looking at curriculum revision?
So my layman perspective on it is, is that a standalone study guide versus how to do a good study skills class is not nearly as useful as incorporating that into the curriculum from the time these kids are in elementary school. And it really needs to be a full program from end to end.
Cause it's a very neat, right?
It is, it's, it's very different than.
That's right.
It's, it's not all kids.
Right.
Right, we have to be real with that, it's not all kids.
Oh, it's not. It's some, it's some.
It's populations of kids, and how do we get at that through, through different lanes?
And it's part of elementary.
It's not unique, I see, my wife, we teaches at West Hartford, she's amazed at the number of freshmen she has or juniors that she has and do not know how to take notes.
They don't know how to do it.
Mine.
Well, I mean, they grew up in computer time, interacting.
Well, but even though they're computers.
They're computers, they're with.
Right.
Whatever the methodology is, if you still do it, is like how to hear information, process it, synthesize it, and what to put down on your paper or your computer, to then go back and that's where the learning really happens.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So just when you were talking about, hey, it's not just a, a separate lane, those are one of the questions that when disciplines are going through curriculum review is inherently in that evaluation of what are those study skills? How do they live right now? What do our standards say? We always start with the standards first. And what responsibility of former this direct teach is going to live in that curriculum development, modification, change, enhancement? So that, that is part of it, but we're going content by content.
That's great to do it. And the curriculum and the content by content, that is a K twelve review, or is it?
That is, it's focused right now primarily on seven twelve. That's quite honestly where we need the most work. The concept that you're talking around about study skills, those discussions are happening as we are developing curriculum, the basics.
Okay.
So when we're looking at think math, for example, we infuse those skills right into that curriculum development.
Okay. And I think we're on the same page for this.
I think so too, no, this is great, I, I, again, you guys have done a lot of work in this area, appreciate it, so really, it's really no direction for us to give you, cause you, you kind of have it, we'll, we'll come back in the fall.
No, I think it's something where opinions of the board have been shared
Yeah.
throughout, and it's kind of creating a coherent plan.
Oh, it's great.
To be able to say it's a focal, focus area.
So I have one other question on the topic of assessments. Um, not the assessments your teachers give, but sort of standardized assessments, the S A T, correct, in my understanding, has changed a bit, not just
It has.
delivery method, but the subject matters and content, it's more vocab focused and things like that. Is part of the work that you're doing focusing on how to, not that we wanna teach to the test, but this is the reality, more schools are requiring it again, are already working on.
It's coming back.
We are, we are, um, that is looking specifically, I'm already working with Maggie and some of the department supervisors on, and we're bringing in kind of outside experts on the actual tool. Um, it's not about teaching to the test, and it's also recognizing that this is our accountability measure. So how do we ensure that we're setting students up for success around experiences that will also look similar to how they're being assessed on the S A T?
And the guidance council, the guidance department's really good, or at least it's been my experience, it's having a senior has been very good about warning, well, wire is not the right word, but.
Has been very good about warning, why is not the right word, but telling folks that how that the SAT specifically is is changing everything from going to computer to this. Or how don't progressive, I don't know how you wanna call it, but.
Adapted.
Yeah, exactly. So um, I I found that at least the communication's been pretty, pretty good. Uh.
Adapted.
You know.
And just uh Maggie and I were already brainstorming with Greg Stillman about a potential kind of family SAT, like bring your results and let's discuss them or. And how looking at the measure of the SAT.
Great. What's the timeline of all of this work you guys are doing? The great work with your curriculum and all of that?
Well, you've been working on the curriculum for at least a year.
We, I have a a ten year cycle that's been articulated. Last year, I'm happy to sit down and share that with you. So you're kind of, again, it's, you can't take it all on. That's why I'm taking certain disciplines on a year, get them rolling.
Of course, yeah.
And then have them create action plans and kind of move. So that's kind of ongoing work. I think the action plan around the um assessments. Is kind of due in the fall to frame it out. Don't have all of those steps articulated yet as far as this is gonna happen by then, but. That's how we're thinking systematically.
In the past, if we made changes, I've found, I mean, let you remember, but some changes we've made in the past. Were so drastic and so radical, so quickly accomplished, that you didn't have the buy-in from the parents, the kids or the teachers. So they basically, they didn't fail, but they were struggling. They were slogging through. So the time, you basically, the time is gonna take the time. And you either do it positively where you do the prethinking, or you do it post where you have to do the cleanup while you're trying to teach it. So I I've always appreciated that once Sue came in and she's like, okay, this is gonna be my plan. I'm gonna start and I'm gonna, I'm gonna take as long as I need to take to get it done, but the end result will have the next steps. She'll end it with, okay, but I'm gonna do this every two years and we're gonna do this. I mean, like how it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a contest, a constant, a constant progress.
And I'm not trying to rush you. I'm just trying to get a sense for sort of what the process is like, because you've got kids who are, you know, freshmen. In high school now who may not get the benefit yet of this work if we're three years before study skills are introduced and I got, just trying to understand.
But you've been adding study skills with every new project so far, I mean, in the last two years.
Right, it's one of the questions that we asked.
Yeah, so. I don't think it's, I don't think study skills are cold, but they're starting in elementary. But again, they have to be more everywhere.
Alright, great, great conversation. Appreciate it. Um. So let's, let's take a ten, we're five minutes ahead. This is great, thank you. Um, but since we've been, exactly, since we've been at it an hour and a half, let's take a ten minute break. Um, get up, stretch your legs and we'll come back and and wrap, wrap it up. We'll keep going. Thank you. That's what I felt, I felt like.
It's always, you do that.
Alright, we we uh.
Yeah.
Our line was, it's kicking all of that. Guys, ready to get back and go?
Yeah.
You good? You say no, you do not need a minute, but.
She's fresh.
She's been fresh.
Okay, um, hopefully we can uh uh get through this one somewhat quick. I just wanted to, a couple of you asked me about. Since we're past the budget and got that in the books, thank you to all the voters who support us there. Um. Just wanted to take like a like a revisit it, just kind of everything from. Process wise, cause I I think we have certainly talked with Matt, there's a few ideas we have around that, how we make, how we can hopefully make it smoother for for everybody. Um, to just. Numbers wise, sorry, where are we kind of, where are we looking at, that kind of thing? So um. Let me, and I'll, I'll, I don't know if you want to, I want to. Yeah. So, you know, in my conversations with with Jeff and thinking about the complexity in particular of the last two budget cycles. Um, thought it would be a good idea to kind of pitch to you this this concept that much like we have a curricular. Subcommittee where the good work that Tara and Sue and Jen just talked about. In some districts, they have a finance subcommittee or a budget subcommittee. And that committee could meet on a bi-monthly basis, monthly basis. I think we could. Uh, look at several things, right? We can look at our quarterly financials. Provide the ability for a board member to be, you know, or multiple board members on the committee to be more engaged in understanding. What goes into that work for Amy and I? Um, I could see this as part of our budget process, discussion about early strategy. Communications with the the board of finance, just a place to get more good heads on the planning process and the budget going in. And more opportunity for board members to report back out to board members about that knowledge. You know, we've had turnover in board members, so sometimes as a superintendent, right? You assume people know things and know the process. They don't. So I think with new members on board, it's a good opportunity to start something like this as well, so it can serve a myriad of functions. Um, they had a finance committee in uh in Glastonbury that I was a part of when I was there. It's kind of what hatched the idea in my head. It was. Very useful um for strategy conversations around. Hey, we're projecting a surplus or we're projecting a deficit. What do we wanna look at? What do we wanna talk about? What can we report back out to the board? Um, I think there are just a lot of things that we could run, much like we do through a curricular committee, through a finance committee, so. Kind of put this, we put this topic on there to see, hey, do you think this is a good idea? Uh, it's a, it's kind of a very easy thing to get initiated by our bylaws. We just need to create the committee. We'd have to. Amy and I could draft kind of the mission of it and the purpose of it and bounce it by people and it's something I believe we could get up and running uh in the fall. Uh, one piece of feedback the board has given me, I think last year a little bit and then will be again a little bit this year. We've had to make some tough decisions in the budget. We make them, we kind of move on, right? We move on to the next planning cycle. Um. There's some decisions I think we've made in the past couple of years. There's a couple of decisions this year. I think we should come back and not revisit like we need, but revisit, this is how the progress. Or or the impact of the decisions we made has created, right? Um. I think sometime, I don't wanna say we shy away from those conversations, but we don't have a forum for it, right? So before you move into a new budget. Where you know there may be challenges, you know you may need to reallocate some staff. Well, have we visited how those reductions worked for us last year? What are the challenges we already know about? Walking in, right? So a whole bunch of stuff we could do with fixed costs, teeing things up, growing people's knowledge base before we get in. I think to the regular budget presentations and we're off and we're, we're doing our thing. And and from where I sit, that's exactly, I think, the benefit, right? Is we kind of have the way, this is the way it's naturally flowed, right? The the cycle is that. We just have this very concentrated look at the budget in this one little period. I think if we had these periodic check, periodic check-ins. We will all be better, better informed, kind of as Matt said too, if 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 there's a red flag, you know, that's kind of where we'll see it, right? We'll have they better, we'll be more nimble to kind of address it at that time where if there's a surplus. Which would be beautiful, um, you know, we can work through that a- as well, right? So and and we've heard actually, and I've heard it uh this cycle too, that there may be an appetite for. Additional conversations throughout the years from other, or throughout the year from other boards too, which I think will help us too. So. One, one way to say, I think this will help our process overall. Take a little bit of the ease and the tension out of that one concentrated area by this, a little bit more of a longer tail and a longer look at the. At the budget. Probably a little bit more work for you unfortunately, but hopefully it'll be, it'll pay off in the end, so. Yeah. I I mean, I think an important piece of the puzzle is, and I've had the benefit of seeing the arc of the board for a while now, is. We received comments this year, just as we're out in the building and we did our listening tours a little bit, of. An appreciation for the level of questions that this this particular board asked during this cycle. So part of that is, that's just based on the information we give you when you get it. How can we grow that knowledge base a little bit? Uh, and give you broader insights and deeper insights into things that I think will lead again to. Better questions, more productive dialogue, more prepared.
And maybe more prepared, more prepared as opposed to waiting and then having to, having to just do the um study guide. We can actually learn along the way.
Right, a bunch of persons.
Right, right?
Sounds good.
Why did you bring it all the heck up?
I'm in favor of it. How many people have to say they're in favor of it? What do you want to do? Let's just go forward.
I think a no brainer.
So.
No brainer, for me.
Yeah.
Amy, long overdue.
Yeah.
So, so I'm.
I was almost as good as Josh, as you can rent or buy.
Feel your thunder.
I need to deliver it to my.
I'm inspired. He's he's aspirational.
Well, I can share one of those.
So, so there's two things that are on the table. One is the finance committee, but then there's the other that we talked about, about it being more frequent, you know. Updates, so two different things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one would drive, one would drive the, one would drive the other, right?
Okay.
Um, because now you'd have, when we start board meetings. Committee updates, right? There would be a regular update of of where we're at and what was, what was discussed. And it conclude a myriad of things that we. Decide, whether it's quarterly financials, budget strategies, surplus, what are, you know, surplus deficit.
Are any questions we might have, right, that we don't have anywhere else to ask them?
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
Which is good for us to be able to hand them to the finance committee to do.
I think it'll be good, right? Right.
I see.
And and again, the the finance, the finance board, you know, hopefully, I mean, hopefully this helps with that work too, right? That can get, it was pretty good, I thought, this year, but it's been pretty contentious in the past, so hoping. Then maybe some of this dialogue can help in that, with that relationship as as well, so. Alright, so that's an easy one to get up and running. Great.
Jeff, how would you see, I, we're all in favor of it, just your last comment there, I'm just curious, cause that was a little added at the end.
Little nugget out of the draft.
Yeah, yeah, but I agree with everything, how it benefits us, our connection, our knowledge. Sound like you're inferring there, it helps us in our connection with board of finance, kind of maybe what I heard. Would there be some connection between board of finance?
Well, they, I'll put it to, and and I have quite frankly, done the gymnastics and worked through through it, but I've heard similar comments from the board of finance.
Yeah.
That that they didn't really, uh, we all kind of have this one little period and one meeting of, and we have those discussions. One meeting. If we can potentially. Maybe get together, I don't, again, I'm not sure about the form and how that all works, but if if we can sort of have maybe a little bit more collaborative conversations along the way. I think they would benefit as well and again, hopefully, hopefully helps us all down the line in the long run.
But that would be separate from that.
But it would, that would be separate for them, right?
Were you contemplating a joint committee?
Yeah, that's where I was hoping.
No, no, no.
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 Okay.
But it like helped.
I think, just clarify your comment there. Again, to the two things, the better collaboration with board finance throughout the year. Is that a, is that a factor of the finance committee being formed or is that just separate from that, just us with them throughout the year? I think that's the splitting of the gears here.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, stop me from not answering questions. So. The finance committee internally helps us all, right? But I'm hoping that that helps drive maybe additional conversations with the board of finance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like monthly updates or something, kind of like what Pam does with curriculum.
Right.
That that sort of, cause like for me personally, right now with the committees I'm on, technology task force, you know, update. Retirement finance subcommittee, you know, we don't talk about like the teachers' pensions. Um, and rarely do we talk about personnel negotiations, so this would be. Right. So, so bringing that to life, I mean, it could be an example where we have that tri-board meeting, right? And it's this one shot deal where a lot of heavy information is provided. There's fixed costs, there's parameters, there's guidance. I could see that leading quickly to, alright, let's get our budget subcommittee together to really process that. Think about information that we wanna see and then come back and report on that to to our board. I think it just gives us a clearer. Pathway to get information to help you guys make the best decisions you can. Great. Amy? Awesome. Um, I know we had on here just kind of. Review of this passage. Of athletics? No. Oh, of um, oh yeah, so that that was another piece that I think could be a regular part of what we do in that committee and come back. Uh, and report on, right? Like there were some, I won't get into specifics, but some key reallocation positions we made from longtime employees this year. That I think we should come back and and owe a visit to of, hey, what was the impact of those decisions we made? Yes, we got our special education funding. But what was the impact uh of what we no longer have uh in terms of a resource? And I think there's been other examples of that in recent years. Um, that we've just moved on from, right? And now you have multiple people doing multiple things. And as this process gets more challenging, cause our, again, our enrollment's not going down. Um. We need to take, take real looks at what we can do and what we can't do based on our decision. So, um, and again, just wanted to sort of tie off, and he had alluded to this earlier, but just next, so do you think? We could have this up by next year? Yes, yeah. Actually, I had Katie already researched all the bylaws. Draw up what we would have to do, so yes, I I gotta relook at it, but we can bring it to a meeting. I think we formally approve it. We decide, decide who the numbers are and we we look at that. It's just been, it's just been a while since I've looked at this. Our our committee specified in our. Yes.
Yes.
So we, yeah, change. Yeah, that would be a standing committee.
Right.
So we just.
That's why we were chuckling. I was kind of chuckling behind the scenes and we were going four and five, I think, in the last time. I'm like, well, we can change it to four and we go right back.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have.
I just gotta get quiet.
So now we'll put five.
That's right. Now you're right, that's right, that's right, yeah, that's right, that's right. So I will work on putting that together. Perfect, yeah, awesome. Any, any, uh, anything, questions, anything else on that one?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think depending on how you approach that, Matt, right, it'll be an interesting one, cause I think. There does need to be more of the, I don't wanna say negative, but there are negatives when there are those things that occur. And I think it's important for people to hear that, cause I think there is a perception sometimes that. Get what we want, this and that, we don't have to go back through all that, but those are tough decisions. And not everything is exactly the way it would have been desired, and I think it's important that that's out there, that there, you know, whilst things did pass. There were impacts that came with it. And I I think, right, you said there's no reason to avoid that, cause it's the reality of it.
I also think that, you know, we have that one time that we come together for budget workshop. I think this will help. Us along the way, because one of the things I think I felt this time was. It wasn't enough time to really go through, you know what I mean? And and so if we are looking at it a little bit more throughout our year. I think by the time we get to that.
Yeah.
We should be pretty comfortable with what we might have to do, you know?
Yeah, or or certainly, that's, you're you're reading my mind, that's what I was trying to say earlier, is I I'm hoping there's certainly less surprises.
Right.
In that, I mean, cause we'll all sort of hopefully be prepared or.
Yeah.
Things are going good. Well, we can always look at the, you know, basic stuff, the continuum of our budget calendar. I mean, Amy's talked to me about that before, hey, there might be different ways we can order presentations, different ways we can group things together. I mean, there's. Does not have to be a stagnant process.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Okay, we'll move along. Awesome. Uh, I. Bunch of you have asked me just about athletics and really e- everything from. Stipends to um how are coaches reviewed to what's going on with the fundraising in the in the booster club? Kind of all that. So just wanted to take a second to um score that, obviously just. Obviously address, answer any questions, have any conversations you want. Anything you wanna just add before we kind of. You know, I know Neil took some time with um Jeff Penny just to go through those three bullets, so I don't know Neil, if you just kind of wanna. Tee it up or the level that people have have looked at the background, but I mean, evaluation was one. Yeah. Piece that was discussed. It might be a good process just to kind of see what folks' questions are and walk through it. Yeah, sure. I mean. See where it goes from there. I could, a couple of them are related to the financial structure of the department and how that works and different. Um, so I can, I could certainly talk about that and then I'll I'll switch over to coaches hiring and evaluation. Um, so the first, the first document that you were given in preparation for tonight was the one that looks like this, which is the. Different color coded sort of columns of um where funding comes from. Um, the first furthest to the left is actually a pretty small, rather insignificant, um, you know, of of. You know, between twenty and thirty thousand dollars around gate fees. I mean, we charge to come to certain games, football, basketball, hockey, I mean. There are, there are gate fees raised. There's been some um advertising around some of the fences, local vendors will pay to put up a sign. Um, knowing that they've got a captured audience there. Um, and as you can see, most of that gets turned around. Because if you're having a game, you have to pay game workers who collect the tickets and watch the crowd and like, so a lot of that just just kind of. Money that goes in and out. The board of ed is the yellow column funding. This is about eight hundred thousand dollars of the budget. Um, it pays for all of the coaching salaries, meaning um the stipends that coaches um at the varsity. There's four kinds of coaches. There's varsity. There's four kinds of coaches, there's varsity, there's assistant coaches, JV coaches, and then thirds coaches or freshman coaches. So, um, head coaches make the most, freshman coaches make the least, um, but we're not talking, I mean, we're, we're talking about a. A head coach for the basketball team probably makes seventy-five or hundred or eight thousand dollars for the entire basketball season. A soccer coach makes seven thousand dollars for the soccer season, these were, these come from a notion that this was what teachers did after school. Right, that's, that's sort of how the structure is built, not necessarily like that anymore, but the structure of. How these got compensated is pretty much the same in all high schools. So mostly, the largest amount of the Board of Ed funding covers coaching salaries, it does, couple hundred thousand dollars, uh. Devoted to transportation, getting the buses to West Hartford and Glastonbury and everywhere else after, uh, school to. Um, travel to games, um, has a pretty substantial cost, and, um, some of that is, is borne by the operating budget. A little bit more, more equipment, some uniforms, some equipment, so you need, you know. Every sport, some are intensely needing equipment, but everybody needs something, and, um, you know, everything from, uh. You know, baseballs that are gonna get hit into the woods, to, um, uh, I, something expensive would be like a brand-new wrestling mat. Would, which you do every however many years, um, would be, um, in there, and then some, uh, facility maintenance. So again, about eight hundred thousand dollars in that pile, and then.
So, you ask a question?
Sure.
So, when you talk uniforms and equipment, um, that, and I don't wanna jump over to pay-to-play yet, because I see uniforms as there.
Yeah, yeah.
Too, so, in the BOE funding, is it just some uniforms, or is it co, I don't, whose uniforms are here that are not in pay to participate?
Uh, it, it depends, there, there are, I mean, Jeff will go to whichever fund he needs, some, some uniforms last for a long time, some uniforms. Kind of go with the kid, you know, they, they buy them for the season and it.
Like the shirt, right?
Yeah, so, um, I, I don't know specifically, this sport is in this pile and this sport is in that pile, but he, he pulls from both of those. I would say the, the Board of Ed funding is more equipment than uniforms, but he does need to do some uniform purchasing out of there. Probably the ones that last a little longer. You know, depending on what. I had two golfers in my house, they got a shirt for the season, they took it with them at the end, I think I paid for it, but.
Right, the shirt.
But different from some sports that want, a standard home and away, and then a fancy home and away.
Right.
And then the swaggiest of the swaggiest home and away, and that's where you may be fundraising for some of those things.
Right, so, pay to participate is probably ju, in the range of three hundred thousand dollars, there's a, there's a fee that kids, uh, families pay to. A pay-to-participate fee over the course of the fall, winter, and spring. A lot of the uniform purchases come out of that, but again, as Matt said, they're not gonna get the, oh. We want our special gray, you know, we, we, the school's already supplying blue and white, but we want gray, like, no. That's not, that's not, um, gonna come out of that, um, we'll get the necessary uniforms. Game equipment, uh, facility rental, the two significant sports that cost facility rental are ice hockey and swimming. There are pretty substantial rental fees, um, for those sports, and therefore, those, uh, families also get charged an extra fee. And then this is where you're paying your league dues, your referees to come to all of those games are all coming out of this fund.
So, I'm a parent, and I have a child that's football, um, volleyball, and rugby. Is there a fee for each one of them?
There's a max of like, three, uh, three fifty, if you don't, it's after the third, right? Yeah, if you pay, uh, I think it's two hundred a season with it, but then the max is, you get the third season for half that.
Yeah.
Five hundred. Multiple kids, like, two, 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 you're paying like, two, two and a half seasons, so six.
So I'll go back, so, so it is a max, you're saying a max of five or four?
It's like five hundred a family or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, even if you got two kids in there?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And if you, if you.
True.
Communicate with Jeff about a hardship to pay, he'll work with you.
Right, right.
Um, and that, that certainly happens, and we have people who have a hardship to pay, but want to, and they do it on an installment plan. So he works with, he works with folks in all sorts of ways. Susan's very good about telling the parent, you hit the max, if you do, they proactively monitor that stuff. The pink column is the nice-to-have, this is where individual teams are up fundraising. Fundraising used to look like selling stuff, now it looks just like asking for money, um, so I think.
It's just looking.
I couldn't have a better guy on the job.
Every year, I just, I just have to buy twenty dollars worth of stuff.
I have a whole unit of football cards in my house.
Um, and where this gets some confusion in the community is the kids will say something like, oh, we're getting rain jackets and new uniforms. And somebody who's being asked to give money goes, wait, why doesn't the school give you uniforms? And the school does give you uniforms, but a sixteen-year-old isn't thinking that way, sixteen-year-old is thinking about the swag that they're gonna get. That has their name on it, Simsberry Lacrosse, and, you know, that's, that is, so individual fundraising, all of the, uh. I'll get to the last column in a moment, these, these are dollars that are kept with, um, our office manager, Beth Jarvis at Simsberry High School. We're not talking about a tremendous amount of money here, a sport might raise eight to ten thousand dollars, it goes into an account. They pay for their banquet, they pay for their swag, and it's basically depleted by the end of the season. Like they're planning, like, what we're gonna do for the season, and they may, you know, it's a pass-along, so that if. They raise the money, they got their banquet, and there's still five hundred dollars in there, they pass it along to the next.
Class.
Next class, and so, um, where larger dollars could exist. Is when groups go and form their own five oh one C three, um, as a charitable organization. Starting with the rich history of the crew team, which was asked by the Board of Ed fifty years ago, as legend tells it, they were asked to form. Like, this was gonna be a joint effort that the board would, would sponsor crew to a certain degree, but that the, that the. Organization was gonna need to fundraise because of the cost of the boats, of a boathouse, of all of that. Um, and they've been raising money for fifty-plus years, and, and do, um. Raise significant amount of money through, um, the various fundraisers that they've had over the years, and people in town know what that has looked like.
They have the best one, that's one, I mean, when they combine, you order sandwiches, and you forget you did it, and then like a month later, they show up on like Super Bowl or whatever, you're like, oh, sweet!
Super Bowl Sunday.
You know, they, they show up, and it's prepaid, you paid like two months in advance, they're just like, dirty drivers, it's the best.
They also break your lawn, the lawn is great, they work, they don't just ask for money, they do it.
Yeah, it is the best.
Yeah, so they are, but that is an annual, it, it, it gets as close to a hundred thousand dollars that they raise per year. In order to, for the upkeep of the boathouse and the, and the many, the many, yeah, the, I would be, just think about how. When you've seen the, the trailer that has to bring the boats out to the, I mean, all of that, they've raised a lot of money over the years.
Can I ask you a question before you move on, because you were asking about crew, does the BOA, BOE pay anything for the boats, like, is there a portion that the BOE pays for crew?
We pay the coaches, I know, I don't, I'm not sure Amy, I'm gonna have to look at Amy, I don't think so.
I thought it was just coaches.
But the transportation of the boats, we don't, we don't, the school doesn't pay for them to get stuff there?
They have their own vehicles, they have their own, yeah.
Do we teach the kids there, or do we don't, they all have a free draw?
We, yeah, we take the kids, yeah, we take, we take them, they get on a bus like everybody else, yeah. Um, and then, more recently, in the past decade, with the largest of these by far being the Gridiron Club. Which formed a five oh one C three in two thousand twelve, and has done significant fundraising for football. And then I would say all the, the other four that exist, you can see are lacrosse, wrestling, rugby, and boys' ice hockey, um, have.
Did baseball just say they were number one?
I think others, I, these are the, these are the six, these are the six that have, I mean, you gotta do some work to get this, and this. And you have to have a board, and you have to file, you know, taxes, you know, you're like, you, you don't do this unless. You're organized and you're ready to go. So, there's my, I'm sure there's no questions. Mike, Mike. Yeah, um, the comment, or my question is really with the last column. Yeah. In really, the, um. Do we, as a BOE, have any oversight of these organizations? They work in partnership with Mr. Penny. Um, I would say, the one that, like, if I go back to crew, for fifty years, that's been a very strict relationship of like. They, because they had to communicate with the business manager about what they were gonna purchase, and, you know, um. I would say we could probably have some better communication with some of the boardists at once. No, I, I appreciate, I guess really where I'm going with that, and kind of, we were joking about this, but it, there's an ounce of truth in this, right, is. Uh, I've, I've had exposure to three sports, uh, at the high school level, and some of this fundraising is absurd. It is constant, and it is big dollars, and quite frankly, I don't know why they're doing it, in, in other words, I don't know where it's going. So maybe this is just an ask of, of the clubs out there and the teams to maybe be a little bit more transparent in those asks. About why, why you're, why you're raising this money. Again, I'm okay with where, if, whether it's additional coaches or uniforms or what have you, I'm okay with it, but just this, hey. Give us two hundred and fifty dollars, you can have the little cozy seat for the bleachers, is absurd. Yeah, so, I mean, certainly we can ask these organizations to have their financials, I mean, they have to have them, so. Um, and, um, typically, they are communicating with Jeff about what their.
Yeah, I would say that, that's the first step, is hey, if, if there is a fundraiser. What is the agreed-upon, like, decision of what you're fundraising for and how you get there and how you're communicating that?
That's all, I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything other than.
Out to the public, right? I think that's a, you know, that's an important piece.
Yeah, I'm not even suggesting anything other than as a parent. Yeah. I, I would like to go a little bit. Right.
What are you saying?
No, it's a parent, that's what I'm saying, like you made clear what the.
I, I, I just don't think we need to at the Board of Ed, I just make, make, we should make sure.
It's clear to parents.
Right, yeah, understood.
Well, and I think that we, I think the AD needs to know where the money is and make sure that, I mean. We have a wonderful town and wonderful people, but this could go south at some point if we don't have enough checks and balances.
Correct.
And I think we protect ourselves and our students.
On the next sheet, you can see that how, uh, starting in the upper right-hand column, there's, there should be. This is the ideal, a shared vision of what a team needs, and then the flow being, you know, identify what the funds will be used for. Make a request, you can see in the pink column, the organizations that keep their monies with us, that all has to be signed off on by. Officials at the school, that this is what the money's being raised for, and that skips on a five oh one C three, too, they don't get a, they don't need our permission to do it. And, but there should certainly be a conversation about what are we doing this for. Um, and I think that where this is, I, I mean, it's the mix of people not understanding. That they're raising for nice-to-haves instead of need-to-haves, and that's where I think some people get turned off. On what they feel is accessible.
I, I got a very interesting email from, uh, just a community member asking me about the, I mean, totally appropriate, but not understanding with. The tax dollars that they pay on an annual basis, why we would not pay for boom, 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 and just based on the casual conversation with. The student and trying to support the program, there was just a lot of.
Well, I know.
But to be clear, not, not all of the fundraising is nice to have, like crew, for example.
Crew would be, yes.
To pay for forty-five dollar boats.
Absolutely.
And pay for everything that's related to the maintenance of their facilities and equipment.
Correct, correct. But well-established, um.
Communication.
Back fifty years ago about how that was gonna work, like the Board of Ed's saying, we can't afford to have a sport as expensive as crew through the operating budget. But we wanna support it, and therefore, if you can raise money, we'd be more than happy to provide coaches and buses and. So I, yeah, I agree, there's differences there, there's differences there between crew needing to do it and some of the others wanting to do it.
Well, I also think crew is setting up a nice, they have a great program that we can use them as, reflect on them as how they do it with us and how they communicate with us. And everyone should do it to the same positions.
On a five oh one C three, we don't get a say in how they fundraise, does Scott, does Jeff get a say before they begin, or no, because they're their own entity.
They're their own entity.
Fundraise however you want, yeah.
But again, these aren't organizations that are working against the administration, right? If there, if there's a feeling that, hey, we oughta. Be a little more consistent when we communicate to the public about the why, I think that's pretty easy to get to.
Yeah.
I, I really do.
Neil, for our, I agree with everything, just for our role, our students in the system. I take it, orange is required, pink and gold, there's, just to be clear, there's no requirement to our students or their families to have to. Participate or add money to these things in order to be on the team, or, any, I just, that would be my only thing, when you're saying it's constant, it's constant. I would just, I would just say, the connection between being on a team at Simsberry High School. And what you or your family put into the pink and gold columns.
Yeah.
I think there should be a little bit of a separation there, right? Am I correct in that, or is there a requirement that like, if you don't donate to our booster club, then we don't have you on a team?
No, certainly.
I don't think we've gone that far, right?
Certainly, you're gonna still get what the team is getting.
Right.
Um, I mean, but there's a pressure that's been built, and a lot of them will be tickets to, you know, um. S- save money at the local, and you gotta, you gotta sell ten of them.
Yep. Right, there's, there's.
And if you don't wanna sell ten of them, moms buy it then, you know, that becomes a pressure.
Right, and it's not the same with youth sports and things like that, it's the same with youth, youth is plenty expensive. I would just say, the only thing where, it would feel like where we're coming to the board is there's the yellow column, which is us. There's the orange, which sounds like we as a program are requiring, and then there's these other ones, which is kinda like, that's kind of between you and the team, right, like.
Yeah.
We don't really have jurisdiction there, if you will, unless it were to be something where people are being treated, air quotes, unfairly, where there was like someone being harmed.
So there's no jurisdiction, but I think. I think there's jurisdiction under the pink, right, because the funds run through us, we're basically the bank, or the district is the bank, right, for the bank.
A little more of a direct approval and consistency there than the five oh one three C.
I guess, I mean, like.
But not our.
That's, that's like the high school, like, yeah, right, but anything as far as the, the world being of our students.
But, but a little more monetary.
That's kind of outside of you, so I think to, I think it was Jen's point, or your point, right, like, sharing with who, sharing with the parents, sharing with the families. Not necessarily where we have the say on that.
Correct.
So the only thing that I would only say about that is right, you're right about all of that, but we do hear about it.
Sure.
Right, you know what I'm saying?
Right, and that's why I'm asked for that differentiation of it's, we can hear about it, we can have these conversations, I'm sure, take to Matt, take, you know, take to Sue, hey, can you talk? There's things there, but from a perspective of what can the board do, right, like, you know, we give funding in yellow, there's a price point in orange. That may or may not be enough, I think you said needs and wants.
And, and you need to know the reality, as I know all of you do, of how big the youth sports have gotten.
Oh my god.
So that you get to the high school, and sometimes it seems like, if you're on a small high school team, they feel like they've taken a step back from what they were experiencing for their kid. And so like, why aren't we, you know, so they, it, it runs a gamut of, uh, of experiences. Um, and a little bit, we'll, we'll get there in a second, you know, boy, we had, my youth team had eight assistant coaches. Why do you guys only have a head coach and assistant coaches, this is crazy, like that, that, we hear that all the time. I think it all just comes, I mean, from my experience with the high school sports, you know, I've never had any issues, I think it all comes down to, um, just communication from the coach.
You know, I've never had any issues, I think it all comes down to, um, just communication from the coach to being in the season with the parents. I mean, for, for men's basketball, there's a parent meeting at the beginning, it's probably been this way for twenty years. And it's outlined, hey, this is what, you know, every kid gets a uniform, every kid will get, go to every home game, away game, et cetera, et cetera. If you want to contribute, the money will go towards the end of the year party, like the banquet. And if you do, your name's in the brochure, whatever, you can contribute fifty bucks or a hundred bucks, you don't have to. Or if you want to contribute your seventy bucks upfront, your son or daughter will have a sandwich for the away game from Jersey Mike's or Subway. If not, they can bring their own, no pressure either way, and boom, that's it, and you can buy in or you don't.
We now also have the athletic, um. We, we, there was an athletic leadership group that was at the high school and, um, it's a sub, subcommittee, I don't even know what it is.
Advisory.
Advisory committee, and so that was, that kind of went away for a little bit and it's now back in business. So a lot of, some of these athletic questions that we're getting now will have a place, a place to rest and get answers, so that's a good feeling.
Yeah, and then the last piece is, you know, certainly a little bit around, um, the cycle of coaches. All the way from hiring through an evaluation at the end of the season. So, um, you know, for the, there, as you can see, all head coaches report to the director of athletics. For the hiring of a head coach. Um, final interviews for a head coach of all sports involve not only Jeff Penny. But also Maggie Seidel and myself by your policies. So we do not get involved with assistant coaches, JV coaches, that is all through, um, Jeff Penny's office. Um, volunteer coaches are, um, allowed in some sports, but if you go to the top left box. You can't just show up and say like in Little League, I wanna coach. You gotta, you, everybody's gotta complete a forty-five hour course on, um, high school athletics and. Uh, you know, ranging and, uh, and then you have to continue modules to follow up on that as you continue to be a coach. You, you pay for the course and you have to be certified in first aid and CPR. So all of that needs to happen before you can coach. And, um, that, uh, you know, certainly, again, that, they, there's a barrier to, they ju, they don't let just anybody coach. Um, that's through the CIAC and, and it, it, you, they actually get the same certificate a teacher gets, like you get a coaching certificate. Um, so that's, that's kind of that piece of it. And then you can see at the end of the season, um, the coaches get evaluated through, they, we have an evaluation system. We have a form that, um, has criteria that get, uh, rated. Um, there is an end of season report that a coach needs to fill out. Um, and then there are surveys that, uh, students and parents are, um. Uh, able to fill out and that feedback can get to, um, assistant coaches and JV coaches of, you know, if you. The JV co, the JV kids all fill it out, that feedback's gonna go to the JV coach. So I, they, they also get that feedback. Um, and they get evaluated, the head coach evaluates the assistance of the program. And that's how that, that's how that works, so happy to answer any questions about that.
Do we know roughly the percentage of coaches that are not faculty?
Um, yeah, it's over fifty percent, yeah.
That's been a trend everywhere, it's hard to get faculty to do it, I'm assuming or to, you know.
So it was the teacher enhancement funds in the nineties in Connecticut, that's when teachers started to get paid better. And that's when, I mean, you couldn't, you needed your coaching job to make a living back in the old days. And now, um, you know, a teacher salary, you're fine, you, you coach if you love it. But, um, you know, that, and we, fortunately, we still have a load of people who wanna do it. But, um, we are definitely seeing smaller pools of people to choose from when you go advertise a head coach position.
Doesn't save us money to have a.
No.
Teacher coaching sport versus bringing someone.
No.
That's the same.
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I know.
It's all determined, it's all in the teacher's contract.
Who don't, who don't work at Simsbury who are willing to coach a head sport for seven grand or whatever.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll get it when you're done, can, are you done? Alright, um, you, when you went over the description of the ser, giving information and the surveys and stuff.
Yeah.
What I wanted to just clarify is, does Jeff regardless of, does Jeff get a copy of all surveys at all levels? Or only the JV gets JV, the varsity gets varsity?
No, no, he can get all those surveys.
He can or he does?
Um, I think it's all done on a computer system. It's all done on a Google board now.
Does he evaluate them, I mean, like.
Does he?
Who reads these?
By the phone, doesn't he get them read?
He certainly, yeah, he certainly looks at them, um, and, um. I know, I know Maggie looked at some of this here when there were some issues that arose. Wanna see the surveys, wanna see the feedback.
And I will say this, we've asked now and made sure a little bit more consistently starting this fall. You need to fill out the survey.
Yeah, we can talk.
Right, it, it, it needs to be part of it, we've always had it, it's gone out. And may have been, gotten a little loose over, over a period of time as, what's the requirement to get it back? Um, and take a look at it, right, which is important, I think you brought that up in advisory.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's already, keep cutting off. That, it's a, I'm on the athletic advisory, and that, we spent a lot of time on that, so it's probably more to come on that, those reviews.
I, I, you know, I, I'm sitting here trying to remember getting.
Parent and student.
Okay, I must've missed the parent one, yeah.
I think they're anonymous.
They are anonymous, yes.
I think if you want, I think if you want, I think you can sign your name if you want.
Sure, I'm just saying.
Yeah, there's an opportunity.
You're gonna get more valid feedback if there's some.
Yeah, just wanna, just work, work on time, everybody good with?
I have one more thing.
Okay, then you're not good, okay.
The five oh one C three.
Yeah.
Right, so there, we are so lucky to have them, right, because they fundraise and they spend a lot of money on the sports and help support it. And we don't have a say at all in those. The five oh one C three also does pay though for some of the coaches.
Correct, the coaches.
So on those coaches, if there is a conflict or a problem, do they, are they monitored by us? Can we set in or is that?
Yes, we hire, we have to hire them. They, they can't just hire somebody.
They can pay them, but they can't.
Our, our, our standards and, and whatnot, this is, they were deployed, exactly, right.
I'm done, man, Jeff.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Um, I, I wanted, we potentially could take these last two together, but let me, let me tell you, um, uh, my thinking on this. I wanted to spend some time on a little bit of a self-evaluation. So, but, so there's, there's two things here, Lydia provided me with the cave self-assessment that I, I'm gonna send out to all of you. And I'd love your, you know, honest, you know, take a couple minutes with it and give you just honest feedback about how you think we're doing, where we can improve, where we. You know, think maybe we're doing well, um, I'll collect them and, and then I'll come back to you, um, with, with that. But kind of with that said, if there's anything burning on your mind, we can certainly talk about it now. Um, I'm clearly open to, you know, there's a different way to do this, I'm completely open to it. Um, we don't need to do it just because that's the way we've done it in the past, so, um.
I think that sounds great, I think sending it out, having us fill it out, it'll, it gives you things to think about when you, it'll help you think through that.
And it's a cave self-assessment tool, okay.
Sounds good.
But, yeah, they use that for a lot of districts, it's a pretty standard.
Yeah.
Rule grid, but a lot of districts, um, have used it in their board self-assessment.
Alright, thank you.
Just anything burning, if they wanna bring it up now? Yeah, okay, going once? Alright, then that, then that leaves us with ample time, um, just, this was just a, a.
Jeff, I guess, sorry. So, yeah, I agree, send it out, we'll respond, just I guess, what then comes of that would be my ask to you. So you'll get all the responses?
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess the way I envision is, yeah, I'll get the responses, cool it, and, and then if there's, obviously if there's themes, we'll, we'll address them if. If there's things that maybe just are bugging somebody, we can, you know, take those as one offs and address them if, if we can, you know, um. That, at least that's my, I, I, to be honest, I'm not, I'm kind of asking that same question, I, I think I need to see the results first, you know what I mean? Um, and see the feedback first before we can discuss those things.
Can I see the tool, can you send me the tool as well?
Yeah.
Just so I can see it.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to also ask guys to give us feedback? About how we can either communicate better, make things better for you guys, help facilitate things in a different way? Should we consider doing?
Oh, I don't have anything against.
An assessment like that?
Lydia, do you have something like that?
In your toolbox?
In the toolbox, yeah, we have that in the toolbox, so there, there, there is something, and I think, I'll send you the copy of the cave one, so you can kind of take a look at that. Cause there's pieces in it of, you know, board self-assessment, you know, how, how does the board rate itself? How do we individually board members rate ourselves, how we're doing as a board, or room for improvement or what have you? So we do this every year for board of directors for, for K, every single year, June, do this thing. It's when we, when we also evaluate for the executive director's evaluation, just as you would do it for superintendent evaluation. But on the flip side, um, there's also tools of asking any executive director or superintendent, you know. Um, they would, would not rate you, rate you, but what are they looking for in terms of the board? Board participation, board, you know, board improvement, board of education, you know, whether the veteran member, new member, what have you. How does the board operate within the confines of the board of education of this district or what have you? So there's a number of different tools that can be used just to, to assist a superintendent and a board.
So a piece of it too is normally in that next meeting where I come to executive session and we follow up on your meeting, that's always a question that's posed. To me personally about any feedback from my team or from me that I wanna share.
Maybe that's efficient, yeah.
So we could, we could start there and see where we go.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so more to come on that one, that's the next step there. And then, so lastly, just wanted to spend the rest of our time kind of, this was really the, what, what, what are we missing, what's not on the list? The, the obvious one, we've already talked about cell phones, we can get back in another second, but just any other issues that people are thinking about that, you know. We should discuss since we have the time, if not, we just go right into cell phones, it's, oh, cool, either way. And, and if not, by, by all means, this is not the last, I mean, if you think about it, when, as soon as we leave, that's kind of what happens to me. Um, just let me know, we'll, we'll, again, if, if you all think this was successful, we'll do it again, right? We'll just keep plugging away through these, these issues.
I would say ju, just that as well, I've talked to a couple people about as we're framing our strategic planning process. There's gonna be like formalized opportunities too within the construct that, that kind of Sue and I are building. For input on specific like action items that we'll be working on, one of the things we've talked about is. A more systematic data dashboard along different areas for, you know, so that would be an example, like we come back to you with something like that. So there, there's gonna be, whether it's this format or, um, there's more work that needs to be done and shared back to you on. Hey, this is gonna be the process of how we plan to get to the next strategic plan, cause we're gonna need a lot of input from you guys. You know, some workshops, some cross-pollination with our administrative team, people that have done this before know that that be. Becomes a very kind of constructive meeting as well to talk about school-based priorities.
So cell phones? So let me just tee it up and then we can get into it, so, um, I, I, I think we all know the issue about cell phones, but. I just, in terms of back, we, we tried to go down this road a few years ago, four, five years ago, I wanna say. We tried to tackle this, I thought, this, maybe not?
No, no, no really taking this like a head on.
Okay, well, okay, so maybe, maybe we just kind of talked about it a little bit, but didn't really take it on. But at, at the time, I think we got some feedback, some concern feedback from parents about, about completely eliminating them. At least that's my recollection, could be, could be wrong. Um, but maybe that's changed, it probably has changed quite frankly, but, um, so, so where do we wanna go with cell phones?
So industry-wide, I mean, there's a lot of talk throughout the country around cell phones in the classroom. So I, I, I think what you're going on is years ago, people probably were more against it. Whereas now, I think it's surfacing as more of a problem in classroom as far as a distraction, the test-taking, all those things are factoring in.
Yeah.
So, so I don't, I think it's a matter of, um, whether we want to do it or not, the state is looking at it. Um, so it's gonna come down one way or another, I believe. Um, so I just think us talking about it is getting ahead of it.
I, I just, yeah, no, and that, that's all I wanna talk about, I, I just find it an intensely complicated conversation, to be honest with you, because. They are a distraction for the most part, but then if it's, again, as I was saying earlier, if it's a distraction. It's a distraction, it's a distraction, that doesn't, that, to me at least, it doesn't necessarily make it a cellphone issue then, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's another issue. But again, if, if we got rid of them, and I have a, I have a student who's eighteen, let's say a senior. We're trying to prepare this, these kids for college. How are we, how are we gonna take?
I'm gonna go back to that, what does that have, when you say trying to prepare them for college and the cellphone, I'm not understanding.
That's a, that's the reality, they're gonna have it, so eliminating it at this, at that, why, that's not necessarily helping them. I just wanna say, like, it's from a, as someone who has a, a nephew who's been in a school shooting. And was able to call my sister during the school shooting with a cellphone in ninth grade, if we try to eliminate cell phones from schools. That's a slippery slope.
And.
I mean, to, to say that you can't bring a phone to a chi, to a seventeen-year-old, a six-year-old, fifteen-year-old in high school. I mean, it's one thing to put him on the cellphone tree or whatever, there's sometimes.
Yeah, they all have cellphone trees.
That's a totally different, but to say you're not allowed to bring it from your car or your bus or your home to your school?
No, that's not what, that's.
I didn't know, I thought that was what the conversation was.
No, no, the, no, the, the, the conversation that's been going around is that there's, they're in the, they're in the classroom. So if there's a cellphone tree, is the cellphone tree in the classroom?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So then they put it in the cellphone tree, but I don't think that that's happening.
Teacher decides that.
That's right.
That's up to the teacher.
And it should be up to the teacher.
Right, and so what I think the challenge is coming in is that there's, it should be, it should be across the board. Because some are allowing it and some are not. And then if I'm sitting, I mean, we're talking about this whole thing around assessments and testing and everything. So are we gonna say that math teachers don't have to allow it, but some do, some don't? That's where policies come in place.
And I, I will respectfully disagree, I think that each teacher and each class is different. And so where a kid might be in a study skills class or in a study hall, they can use their phone in that time. If there are kids in a math class and they wanna use a certain app with that teacher and that teacher has decided that there's value in it. Then I don't feel like it's my place to say, no, you can't have a cellphone in that class. I think each teacher has to have the ability to make that decision for his or her own classroom.
So there was a school in Connecticut that just ran a pilot, and I think it was partially funded with a grant from the state. Where they had these magnetically sealed pouches.
That's right.
That could be easily cut in the event of a school shooting.
That's right.
The teachers all, and, and there was a ton of pushback from parents for a variety of reasons. I wanna reach my kid, what if there's a school shooting, all of these things, we need to teach our kid how to use it. But this principal and the district spoke to parents, got everyone sort of to a base point where they could give the pilot a try. And it was apparently incredibly successful, where distraction in classrooms were down. Teacher spent a ton less time focused on disciplining kids, about following the policy that the teacher set in their classroom. You can have it, but you can't use it, well, all these kids pull it out. And we know that cell phones are addictive, right? They are designed by behavioral scientists to be addictive to all people, but especially young people. So this, this pilot that happened was incredibly successful and I think they're rolling it out even further as a result. Because it brought down not only the distraction in class, the grades went up, teacher sort of, joy is the wrong word. But teacher, help me with the word, satisfaction went up. Um, and also there, um. Many of the social problems and the discipline problems that get exacerbated, uh, because of social media and the things that came after, just lessened. There was just a better school environment as a result, and this one pilot, and I know Massachusetts has piloted in a few different places. This is not sort of a Simsbury only, I, I mean, it's a very broad.
So that's Manchester. And that's a middle school. So it was not a middle school, not at the high school, and that's an easy enough resource to reach out, out to and get the real kind of. I'd be happy to do that, you know, contact the. You know, contact the superintendent and really get a handle on that. And I think, I mean, it's a big conversation, right? And there are rules. So I mean, I think the first is, hey, what rules do we have in place? Are they being followed or not? Um, I hear more about the challenge at the middle level than I do at the high school, to be honest with you. So, um, it'd be interesting to maybe get some input from administrators on that, right? Like where, where, where are they at on that?
And maybe to answer this, my question was to say, are you, when you say you're hearing about it more, I mean, are you hearing about it from parents or from T V?
Um, more just administratively of things they deal with that might have to do with phones somehow. Or just the, the non-compliance, right? Because even if it's not what seems like a major, right, like let's be honest, a major infraction, you take your phone out when you shouldn't. It's just the repetitive nature with the maturity.
Yeah.
And then it, it becomes something that you're chasing all the time and, again, to Neil's point, what, what's the battle you're gonna choose and how much energy you're gonna put into it? You know, if it's gonna be that, you should have a good coherent and clear plan on what you're doing. Otherwise, it becomes something else, right?
Or maybe middle school's the right place for it. And then you teach the kids that they can, by the time they're in high school, they've survived in their classrooms without the phones. And you taught them how to disconnect from the phone for a significant period of time and focus on work, which is a systemic problem for teenagers and twenty-somethings and, and adults. Like this is a constant distraction. So maybe middle school is the right place to start.
So I'm gonna add one other thing too. So thanks for sharing that too. Um, but when we talk about testing and all that, um, cell phones come into that factor as well. Because there's reports of the cheating that's going on. And so that's not elementary. That's not middle school. That's in high school. And so I, I just, you know, whatever we do, whether it's, you know, we can, you know, however we decide to, to address this, I think that we, it still needs to be addressed within the, within the high school.
Okay, can I, uh, this is nearly, can you say a little more about the, there's the cheating issue?
So, yeah, so, so we have a whole conversation around what we've been talking about with assessments, right? And the testing and reasons why it doesn't go home and different students in different sections, you know, they know the test. Well, how else do they know the test? They know the test because they could have this.
They could also just remember it in their head.
Well, but if it's twenty-five questions, I don't think they're gonna all remember, you know? But, but we can all give answers for that, but I'm just saying it could factor into that as well.
No, I don't disagree.
Can I ask two questions on this cellphone topic? I'll give you a second to think, cause I'm gonna ask you a question. Number one, I guess I just, I'll level say, what are we trying to do? Rhetorical. I don't, I don't, I guess I'm not following what we're trying to do. Uh, number two, where's Cave on this? Because it feels like we're looking for something and I don't know the like end goal, but maybe there's something I'm just not tied to.
Alright, good, good question. Um, Cave does not take a stand. We, we never take a stand because we can't. We are an association of boards of education. So we, and we represent the entire state. So we don't take a stand, you know, yay or nay on, on any positions. Um, Cave is to, you know, is there, just as caps for superintendents, to provide the best information possible, such as having a discussion or should we decide to go a policy route? Or for the discussion or a pilot or what have you, they would be there to assist us in that format. With that being said, um, and at, at the state level, the education committee, there has been talk about, you know, and we pushed back on it. Let's put it this way, that we pushed back on any kind of policy or mandate abolishing cell phones within classrooms. Because, you know, bills and amendments get through the education committee because it may take one constituent that says, geez, you know what, the cellphone in my kid's high school class is causing disruptions, problems, disciplines, tests, cheating, yada, 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 yada. A legislator will bring it forward, say, yeah, that's what I got, you know, but one person may have come forward with that. So, um, we do not want the state to mandate to districts, you know, abolishing cell phones or anything. It's up to individual districts to, um, to police or to utilize the best policy, best practice within their own district, within their own middle or their high school regarding cell phones. And that's why within Cave, it's up to individual districts. Hopefully they've been having conversations, you know, how to best go about it. But, um, with that being said, there was discussion at the general assembly this year, cause I was there and I heard it thinking, we hope it doesn't go any further than that. With that being said, um, yes, Manchester did this pilot program, so other districts are probably gonna take a look at this. But it's something that's up to individual district. So there's pros and cons within, within, within what a district wants to do, you know, in terms of, of their own regard.
Let me, let me just kind of address your first question though, uh, in the, in the sec-.
Okay, now I have a follow-up for Lydia.
That, go ahead.
So Cave, nothing, so that's, so at this level, they're staying out of it more.
Yeah, yeah.
What, so then my follow-up there is, in our area, our derg, if you will, all the, is there any precedent for this? Besides like this pilot at a middle, like, I'm just trying to feel like how far ahead of it, over the skis are we getting?
That, that, that's exactly where I'm going.
Yeah, which I'm taking that.
So let me, so what, this is really, this is really, right, this is the first we've had the conversation.
Pretty far.
Yeah.
So what I, what I'm comfortable doing is, is just teeing up the conversation, maybe giving these folks a little homework to see, to get at kind of your questions. Like, are there anybody in the derg?
Is there an issue?
Where, where is the issue?
We could just pour in that work groups.
Oh, yeah.
How bad, like what's the, maybe the sentiment in the buildings, that kind of, kind of stuff? And then let's, let's come back, cause clearly I think you're, you're already seeing a split here, hearing a little bit of a split, at least today. So I don't know if, I don't feel comfortable putting forward ea- any kind of directive, to be honest with you. Um, but so that, that's kind of at least my goal for tonight, unless I'm not hearing you guys. I definitely think it's worth seeing what other districts are doing.
Yeah.
I mean, a hundred percent, you know, information is, you know.
I mean, even the Manchester piece, it would be really good to know our, where the idea initiated. Initiate, what was it in response to? How was the decision made? Like, I'm not even sure.
How the teachers like, yeah.
You know, was that, was that a building-based decision with the support of the superintendent? Was that board involvement? You know what I mean? There's certain, I think, pieces we would have to, have to sort through.
We have no, we have no, we have to.
Um, but it's certainly a topic that's on a lot of kids' mind. I mean, you know, one of the largest cellphone issues we have is, I mean, there may be challenges in school. It's the stuff that happens out of schools that then gets brought to us. It's still not gonna help us with that challenge, you know?
I mean, my recollection of the article about Manchester was that in fact it did help, but I think.
Yeah.
So what I would ask.
It was on Washington Post, it got a lot of fluff.
It got a lot of press. And, and I, my recollection, you know, maybe, am I right? That, that it helped reduce the outside of school stuff as well. So what I would ask is that you guys go back and research and learn what you can and, and you're the educators, right? Like let us know what you think makes the most sense. I can tell you what I think from a parent perspective and, but I'd love to hear your informed and educated views on what we should do about this. And in terms of getting over our skis too far, I think it's really important to know what our towns are doing around us and people in our derg. But I also think someone has to be first and it's okay to be proactive and not always reactive. And so I would just end with that.
So the technology started in the entertainment industry with concerts and stand-up comics who didn't want you filming their material and your, your cellphone had to go into a pouch when you are at the show. So that they can't steal your property, like your intellectual property. And then when you leave the show, you get your phone back.
If you go to Augusta, you can't bring it in.
Yes, you can't do it in Augusta.
I would say the only one.
Sacred places.
Yeah.
My only point on over the, the skis was, that is a major policy shift. To talk about a major policy shift, you have to have a lot of input, a lot of data and a lot of, doesn't mean you can't make a major policy shift.
No.
So I just meant like conversations kind of getting down the road.
We're at the beginning.
Yeah.
Without, we haven't even.
We're not even the first.
Right?
This is the first conversation, right? Like this is the beginning of starting that work to figure out, should we make a major policy change?
Yeah, and I would just say that I'm not afraid, I don't think I was afraid to go first. I'm not saying we have to follow derg, you know, I, I think if it's something we're gonna go first that's this big, there has to be a big reason for it. Would be my only thing. If we wanna say Simsbury is gonna set the precedent for cellphone usage in this area. To your point, I'd want a lot more data to be like, we're gonna put ourselves out there on this topic. Why this, why now?
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep.
Very good.
Awesome. Any other que- issues? What, what did we miss?
That's enough, man.
That's like, shut up, shut up, shut up. Was this helpful? You guys, find this constructive?
I think it was great. My only ask, and I think it'll come up, and you had mentioned workshops and things like that, it's just, again, haven't even been doing this a full year and stuff like, the opportunities for more of it. It feels like, right, budget is like, at least, right, it's like a, right, you come in and then it's the summer, and then the school year's starting. And then it's, and like, I could see where, again, I haven't been through it, so like, it's just very cyclical, right? Like, it's just, maybe it's those workshops or where you have the time to actually just carve out strategy, forward thinking, where, where it's just not like, you know, we have, you know, go to the different schools, get the reports from the committees, get this and that.
Yeah, and there may be opportunities to shift that, right? Like i- if there are focused topics now.
Yeah.
Right? Just, not that I wanna get back on the cell phones, but cell phones, you bring that initial research back, we can have a board meeting conversation about that. Right? I mean, we, so we can push each other's thinking on those type of things too. It doesn't have to be the same cycle, right?
Now, I don't know what that cycle is.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me say thank you to all, all of you. I really appreciate the, the dialogue. I appreciate the conversation. You guys were all engaged. I appreciate it. That was very helpful and hopefully this was productive. And with that, take your motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Nice meeting.
Thank you.
I'll need a second. Sure you got it.
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.